Where we actually watched one of the original Abraham Lincoln movies from a that was starred Raymond Massey, who actually came to Delaware and participated in some of the Lincoln events. That movie was nearly 100 years old. We watched it. There was a, you know, over 100 people that came with us for that. We took a trip to a very familial trip that the judge, his family has gone to Ford's Theater where Lincoln was shot in DC. She was attending with her family to a Christmas Carol every winter when it was showing at the theater. And we took a group, again, another dozen or so people that came down from the club. We all went down there and sat literally underneath of the exact balcony where he was shot and watched the Christmas Carol, which was beautiful presentation. We did, we have a book club, which Marty hosts at her home and cooks for everybody. I've hosted at my home. I bought the food. So, but we had an amazing time. The books are always bestsellers that are, that link, top Lincoln scholars are discussing today about the issues. I'm getting, I'm getting pulled here. And so, you know, those, those, those speakers, normally they're either at the book club, or they come to, they then keynote our speak, our annual dinner. Yeah, so it's jam packed, full of really awesome things. And we're always recruiting for, for new members that want to join and become part of the Lincoln Club. It's a very de minimis annual fee. Great event, great programming that really helps really learn about the legacy of our greatest president. Thank you for the award. Thank you so much. Thank you, Councilwoman Oliver. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Jim Baker loves this stuff.
We gotta get him.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
And Councilwoman Oliver, did you have any other in-person recognitions?
All right. If I can please have the Gallant Blazers come up to the podium, all those who are involved. This, this recognition is by Councilwoman Xanthia Oliver and myself. Whereas it is the sense of city council to honor individuals, organizations, and events deserving of recognition and acknowledgement. Councilwoman Xanthia Oliver and Yolanda McCoy recognizes the Wilmington Fire Department's Gallant Blazers for their dedicated service to the city of Wilmington. And whereas the Gallant Blazers are a professional development organization that consists of 30 members and is part of the International Association of Black Professional Firefighters, which advocates for his black and Hispanic firefighters. They are an elite group that promotes interracial progress throughout the Wilmington Fire Department, ensuring that minorities are recruited and retained. They also aid in motivating minorities to seek advancement and advocate for diverse workforce and support innovative initiatives in the city. And whereas in addition to their support within the department, the Blazers are very involved in their community through programs initiated by the group, including gain for employment, which assists those interested in obtaining their emergency medical technician certi- certification for free. In suit up, an event during the first week of school, the Blazers show up in suits and uniforms to encourage students to be productive and apply themselves during the school year. And whereas this supportive and dedicated organization also works in service to our seniors with programs, including bingo with the Blazers held at the Senior Center in High Rises and Adopt a Senior for Thanksgiving. Their programs include Toys for Tots, the Community Turkey Giveaway, and the 76ers Night Out in support of the fire victims. Now therefore, be it resolved by this council of the city of Wilmington, and this council is pleased to recognize the Wilmington Firefighters' Gallant Blazers for their continued community support. Job well done.
Thank you, everybody. My name is Demetrius Todd. I'm the president of the Gallant Blazers. I want to thank Councilwoman McCoy, Councilwoman Oliver, and all the other council members who supported us in the past, such as President Congo, Councilwoman Darby Bay, Councilmember Owens. The Blazers is a group that, we currently have 29 people now. A person just retired. But we're 29 men and women who actually go out into the community, and we're thoroughly immersed in just trying to be impactful and intentional with respect to getting people interested in the fire service. We believe that it's hard to be what you can't see. So we try to be as visible as possible, as proactive as possible, as engaging as possible. And we're making a lot of progress, but we can use each and every one of you guys' help. We're always looking to do positive, proactive collaborations. So if you guys have anything going on in your community organizations, and you need us to come out and speak to people, we'd be more than willing to do so. Thank you.
I just wanted to extend my appreciation for you all. You all do such excellent work in the community, as I'm the grandchild of one of Philadelphia's first black firefighters. And my grandfather was part of the Valiant and everything up there in terms of the museum. So I really appreciate the work. So whatever I can do to get involved, as I'm a legacy of a black firefighter, please, please let me know. Thank you for what you do in Wilmington.
Will do. But with that in mind, next week, April 26, at Oth 84, 902 Market, the Gallant Blazers is going to be hosting a seminar. It's an upward mobility seminar.
It's going to be at the Sheridan.
That's going to be at the Sheridan. That's going to be on the 25th, excuse me, Double Tree, on the 25th and the 26th. It's upward mobility conference. And it's going to be a lot, there's going to be a lot of firefighters coming from different areas within the Northeast region to our city to visit. They're coming from places like Connecticut, Maine, New Hampshire, Vermont, Philadelphia, New York, and of course, here in Delaware. And Saturday night, we're going to have a gathering where we're going to recreate with one another, celebrate one another, and just have a good time. That's going to be at the Oth 84 at 902 North Market. So there's going to be members of Club Valiant there. If you want to come out and recreate with us, you're more than welcome to do so. To my left is Lawrence Hines. I don't know if he has something he wants to say, but he's our treasurer. I know I'm doing all the talking, but it's bigger than me. A lot of times, I'm like the voice, and I'm saying a lot of stuff. But like I said, we represent 29 other people who, who really can use your help and who, who appreciate all the stuff that we do.
Councilmember Darby?
Yes. I think this is a great recognition. I really appreciate all the work that you guys are doing in the community. The advocacy and the voice that you have been for black firefighters in the city of Wilmington can't go unrecognized. And as I sit here, resolutions, events are nice. I hope that as a city council, we support you when your voices, when you are telling us that there are issues with diversity in the fire department, treatment of black firefighters. I hope that beyond the resolution, beyond that event at that conference, which sounds like it's going to be a whole bunch of men on Saturday night here who are firemen, you know, but outside of that, how do we support you guys outside of this resolution is what I'm really concerned about and what I'm willing to continue to fight for, for you guys, because your voice matters. And this resolution is nice, but it has to translate to actionable things. So thank you guys for what you're doing and hold city council accountable beyond the resolution and the event to make sure your voice is heard.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Owens.
Yes. I just want to say, first off, congratulations on a resolution and keep up the amazing work you're doing in the community. This is what our community is supposed to be about. People who come from Wilmington, being able to step up and be on the front lines of saving so many lives. And as we're discussing the EMS services right now, y'all are on the front line of this, right? So we want to make sure as we start to scale up things, that we are more reflective of our community. And that starts by having y'all right at the table with us as we start fighting for that. So again, to the 29 of y'all, and all the retirees as well, to thank you for the work that you have done. And I definitely look forward to working with y'all in the future.
Clean up. Next weekend, we will be hosting the Northeast Regional Conference. Members from Canada, all the way to Delaware, along the East Coast will be there in presence. We'd appreciate if we saw the community come out Saturday night and spend some time with us. We'll be rubbing elbows with some of your first responders. Thank you. Have a good night.
And I'd also like to recognize a resolution of recognition from Councilmember Spadola, who is recognizing Darcy Brazier on their retirement. And then as far as sympathy resolutions from all of council, there is a sympathy resolution for Marion G. Brewster from Councilmember Caver, a sympathy resolution for Jane Plastid Bernard Hansen from Councilmember McCoy, a sympathy resolution for Deborah Lynn Jackson, and from Councilmember Oliver, a sympathy resolution for Valerie McKnight. At this time, we will move to public comment. Just want to ask to, that when you do come forward, to please introduce yourself. Please watch your step as you come to the podium. You have three minutes to give public comment. Once you have around 30 seconds left, I will give you a friendly reminder to wrap your comments up. Also, if you do live in the city of Wilmington, if you like, you may give, you may tell us what district you live in. Okay? First, we have Deacon Earl Tate. Thank you for joining us, Deacon Tate. Watch your step.
Hello. My name is Deacon Earl E. Tate, who's never laid, because he didn't want to lose a pair of roller skates. And, and I'm here representing, representing the people. And, and we got, we got to get in touch with our councilmen, our senators, our governors, and all down in DC, and tell them, and tell them to put their foot down, put their foot down on, on, on these things, on these things that, that, that this president is trying to stop, try to stop. He's, he's trying to interfere, interfere with the education of our students. If our, if our students don't know the past, how could, how could they face the future? Because, because, because if we don't want to repeat that, that, that which have happened before, we should learn, we should learn the more now. Because, because, because our kids are our future, and our future is now. Also, also he want to cut out, he want to cut out the lunch programs and all. Hey, hey, our, our kids got to eat. So, so, so feed, feed them, feed them. A lot of, a lot of time, they don't get nothing to eat at home. So, so we got, so, so, so we, so we at the public school system, we, we had, we had, we had, we had to step up, step up and feed, and feed our kids. Not only food, but, but, but wisdom and knowledge and understanding. Not only in the books, but, 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 but in everything. Because the mind is a terrible thing to waste. And if we don't teach them now, who's going to teach them? So, so it's time for us to step up and take action, take action. Because if we don't, nobody else will. And, and I like to say this to you. Have a nice Easter, a nice beautiful holiday, and remember, hey, as long, as long as we keep Christ first, we can make it.
Thank you. Tyra McNair.
President Congo, she just asked me to make you aware that she had to leave.
She had to leave?
Ms. McNair, yes.
All right, thank you. I don't believe that Sam Walts is still with us. Dante Pavan? Deidre Shepherd? Deidre Shepherd? Yes, you can come this way. Thank you for joining us. And please remember to introduce yourself. Once you get to the podium, please watch your step. Again, if you live in the city, if you would like to give your district, you may.
Greetings. I am Deidre Shepherd, a Wilmington resident. Over the past several weeks, I have had the opportunity to attend four town halls conducted throughout the city. I also had the opportunity to hear feedback regarding concerns to protect renter households, excuse me, who currently have no protection against the rising rent crisis and predatory practices of landlords. When asked about the city's plan to protect their renter households from the negative impact families are facing as a result of the rising rents, there was a lack of support for implementing rent stabilization, but no sufficient plan to protect renter households. Whether this lack of support is due to a lack of concern for the rising rent crisis, the lack of connection to the constituents impacted by rising, by the rising rent crisis, or a lack of competency to address the rising rent, rent crisis, it is diabolical to prioritize and enable the predatory practices of corporate entities and landlords, over prioritizing the housing health and stability of the city residents, who are majority renter households, and still believe the end result will be a thriving, vibrant city. We do not consent to be forced to believe that implementing rent stabilization will have a negative impact on our city. We do not consent to be gaslit, to believe rehabilitating and selling vacant properties is the answer to providing protections to future renters, nor the thousands of renter households already actively renting. We do not consent to be gaslit, to believe that renters are not being self-sufficient, because they cannot afford to maintain self-sufficiency due to rent increases. This is not a low-income crisis. This is not a median income crisis. This is a renters' crisis.
You have 30 seconds.
So when it comes to ensuring rent stabilization is codified into the legislation, city council is charged with the responsibility to uphold the current expectations of any renter household when the household is faced with rent increases. And that expectation is to do due diligence to figure out how to make it happen and get it done. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will go to our virtual participants. Julia Robinson? WITN is Julia Robinson. Still with us? She's, she's actually, she's in chambers on WITN. Thank you for joining us. Please watch your step. And please remember to introduce yourself.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having me and giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Julia Robinson. I'm a renter from the 5th District, and I'm here in support of rent stabilization. This bill would limit the percentage that rent can be raised each leasing period. Rent stabilization would provide stability to renters who otherwise are left guessing how much their rent will raise each year. This would limit predatory landlord practice and exponential rent increases, while still allowing some increases. So it's very different from rent control. All Delaware residents have reason to support this bill, and it has proven effective in other states such as New Jersey, which is pretty close to us. It does not slow housing production in any of the states that it has been implemented in. This bill would also lower rates of houselessness in our city, which the majority of people are, I think, one paycheck away from houselessness. So I'm here today to urge elected officials to do what is right for Wilmington by supporting rent stabilization. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Porter? I think I, please remember to introduce yourself once you reach the podium. When you have 30 seconds left, I'll give you a friendly reminder.
Hello. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Sheena Porter. I live in the Oliver District. And I have been a renter for five years now. So I'm just here to support rent stabilization, because it's, for me, to have an apartment, two-bedroom house for $1,500, it's just overly overwhelming to try to pay for my basic needs paycheck to paycheck. I'm proud to say I am a prospective homeowner with the habitat of humanity, but without the help of my parents, I wouldn't even be able to save for my settlement costs. So I think that homeownership is a dream come true for everyone, and it's the rising cost of homes. In the city of Wilmington, it's not a great, it's not an opportunity that can be presented to everyone if they can't even save for a down payment and settlement costs at this point in time. So I think that we really just have to sit back and figure out how we can create a thriving community in the city of Wilmington, where people can have the opportunity for home ownership if they want to transfer out of renters to that space. So I'm just here to support rent stabilization, just hoping that for people like me, they can have the opportunity to be able to save, to not just be able to pay for basic needs, but to be able to make their dreams come true. So thank you for letting me speak.
Next, virtually, we have Christina Kelly.
Good evening, and thank you for a chance to speak tonight. My name is Christina Kelly, and I am urging the city council to pass rent stabilization. I apologize that I'm not able to be there in person tonight, but like many others, I had to choose between rent and gas this month. So virtual it is. More than half of Wilmington residents rent their homes, yet there are currently no limits on how much landlords can raise their rents. Many renters are struggling. Statewide, 70% of extremely low-income renters spend more than half of their income on housing. Eviction filings have been rising since pandemic protections ended, which disproportionately affects black and Latino households. This instability only harms families and serves to weaken our communities. The proposed ordinance would cap annual rent increases, and this is a fair data-driven policy that protects tenants while still allowing landlords to earn a return. Rent stabilization is a necessary step to keep Wilmington livable for all. Let's act now to prevent further displacement and ensure housing stability. Thank you.
Thank you. Dora Williams? Thank you for joining us this evening, and please remember to introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name is Dora Williams. I do not live in the city. However, I am part of Sam's Housing Task Force. I also tend to stay, but I am here on their behalf. And I am here to urge city council to pass the rent stabilization. And I'd like to say that when you look at rent stabilization, I think what happens, I know what happens, it decreases homelessness. Our Delaware Housing Alliance says that 13 people are homeless, was homeless during any given night in 2024. That's a lot of people to be homeless. And so I thank you very much. And I also say a prayer. I thank you for Deacon Tate coming up, because, and the prayer that was said prior to this. So I want to say that I thank, I want to pray that God speaks to city council, so that they will hear and fulfill what has been put before them, that in them, His purpose for the ages, for the homeless, will be fulfilled. Thank you so much.
Thank you. For everyone who has signed up for public comment, you do not have to, you're welcome to, but you don't have to state whether you live in the city or not. If you do want to state what district you live in, just so the council member can connect on another level with you, you're welcome to. But again, it's not a requirement. All right, thank you. Next, we have Justin Koge. Thank you for joining us, and please remember to introduce yourself.
All right. Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Justin Adakambi Koger. I'm a lifelong Delawarean. My grandmother lives on the West Side where she raised my father. I currently work in Wilmington from Councilwoman Darby's district, which too makes me a Wilmington taxpayer. I'm here today because as a renter, a millennial, and a PhD-trained economist from UD, I believe this current housing situation isn't sustainable, and we need rent stabilization to provide some relief while we address the city's housing supply crisis. I've seen people of all ages and backgrounds struggle to afford housing, something that is a fundamental human right. I know there's some debate over that, but I firmly believe that. And we, as we're now discussing the future of our nation, things are looking very perilous and shaky. I think that healthcare, education, housing, freedom of association, pollution-free air are not things that we can leave to the whims of unpredictable, non-competitive markets. I'm giving this comment because morally, using housing to build personal wealth while our fellow citizens are priced out of the neighborhoods that they built is appalling. From an economic standpoint, it's also short-sighted and unsustainable. My own research and training as an economist shows that if a market is non-competitive, people are likely to be undersupplied. When that market is housing, it becomes a humanitarian crisis. Please move to pass a thoughtful rent stabilization policy. This, this legislation is, is well researched. Like people have already mentioned, it's not going to cause these negative effects that people think. It's just going to give us time to breathe while we figure out the housing supply. Please move to pass this, this policy and seriously address the affordability of housing by expanding the supply for everyone, not just low-income renters, but this will disproportionately help low-income renters and people of color. Thank you.
Next, we have Cecilia Hobbs. Thank you for joining us. Please remember to introduce yourself.
Ooh, I have to put my glasses on. Good evening, everyone. My name is Cecilia Hobbs.
Ooh, I have to put my glasses on. Good evening, everyone. My name is Cecilia Hobbs and I have been a homeowner for eight years. I'm here to support the rent stabilization and affordable housing. Thank you for the opportunity of allowing me to speak. Research shows that rent stabilization, especially when paired with housing policies that address the need for more supply and subsidies, does not slow housing production. Although there has been much discussion on rent stabilization negatively impacting new construction, there is little evidence that rent stabilization policies have a negative impact on new construction. There is little evidence that rent, I hope I'm not reading this, in fact, I'm sorry. Research shows that rent stabilization that allows limited increases in rent can be paired with policies that stimulate new construction to address affordability crisis. For these reasons, I am in support of rent stabilization and hope that the City Council will support this ordinance. Rent stabilization can provide renters much-needed support and relief to afford their housing costs without creating more stress and burden on them and their families. I encourage the City Council members and each and every one of you to take their free online game. It's an interactive game called SPEND. I'm not sure if you've heard of it, S-P-E-N-D, not to be confused with spent, but spend. I did it and I failed that test. And what I found was greater than 50% of the income provided went towards rent, causing me to decide if I would cut out on needed medicine, food, copay for a doctor, electric bill, just to name a few. Ultimately, I was evicted because the rent was too darn high, so I'm asking, encouraging you to please pass this. Thank you.
We do have a few more people who have signed up, so just to expedite the process, I'm going to call a few names, going to ask that when your name is called, if you can just line up on the wall to my left to your far right, so we can keep everyone moving. Next we have Brandon Fletcher. Following Brandon Fletcher will be Ann Aviles. Okay, gracias, Aviles. And also Dora Williams. Cheyenne Miller, I'm sorry, Cheyenne Miller. Brandon Fletcher, thank you.
Council President and members of the Wilmington City Council. My name is Brandon Fletcher. I am an organizer and volunteer with the Homes Campaign and the City of Wilmington Autonomous Tenants Union. We organize with renters, homeowners, and we believe that housing should be treated as an essential element of life, readily available to all people like air and water. We believe that a stable and safe and affordable home lays the foundation for a meaningful life, connected neighborhood, and thriving community. The current reality is that Black and Brown people who live in city centers and other gentrifying areas are being priced out of the places that they have called home for years. When rents go up excessively or unfairly, people lose their homes. When people lose their homes, they are less able to work consistently, to stay healthy, or to keep themselves and their families safe. According to the Delaware State Housing Authority, half of all renters across Delaware are cost burden, which means they spend more than 30% of their income on rent, and that doesn't even begin to include the costs of food, utilities, transportation. Housing policy experts, developers, and advocates are collaborating with state and local governments to address the lack of housing units across the state. Building more housing is essential. However, as it was stated, it's simply not enough to address the affordability crisis. In Wilmington, there have been thousands and thousands of units added to the market and the rents have not gone down, they have only gone up. And so city residents right now are struggling more than ever to find affordable housing and the Republican Carney talking point of trickle-down housing theory does not work to quickly or effectively help people. Trickle-down housing theory assumes that building high-end units eventually frees up old housing for middle-income residents, but the reality is low-income residents gain minimally if any relief. And so rent stabilization is a fair option for both renters and landlords. It still allows landlords to raise, to receive a fair rate of return on their property. Many rent stabilization laws don't apply to low-income housing, while other exemptions can be made based on building size, building age, for small mom-and-pop landlords, and some policies allow rent to be raised higher than the stated limit in the law if property owners do repairs or renovation. I also want to thank the council member who sponsored this legislation for having the courage to stand up against corporate developers. It takes guts. And also would like to thank Councilmember McCoy for introducing the ordinance to amend Chapter 34 to allow residential tenants in city properties to deposit withheld rent in city-held escrow accounts.
You have 30 seconds.
Because good rent stabilization policies allow for landlords to apply for higher rent increases when there's a legitimate need for repair and should be included with strong code enforcement like pre-rental inspections, not blind trust in the market. So if landlords are unable to maintain safe conditions despite modest predictable rent increases, that's, has nothing to do with rent stabilization, it has to do with escrow, so thank you for that. And I encourage all the City Council members to support this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. Please remember to introduce yourself. Thank you for joining us.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. My name is Ann Aviles and I am also with Homes Campaign. Also, I'm like A U D in the House. I'm also an associate professor in Human Development and Family Sciences, where I do a lot of work with communities, in particular, young people experiencing homelessness and the negative impacts that it has on their development and their learning. So I'm here today to support, also to urge our council to support rent stabilization. I'm aware of the current financial challenges that too many renters face. I was also a renter myself in the 8th District and the significant increases in rents over the last few years. In average, there's been a 24% rental cost increase in 2021 and a 14.5% increase in 2022, which has left too many renters without access to housing. In fact, there's a report by the, in 2020, by the Government Accountability Office that finds that $100 increase in median rental price is associated with about a 9% increase in homelessness. So we see there's this direct connection between housing affordability and people becoming homeless because they can no longer afford their rent. Renters need relief and they need it now. Rent stabilization can contribute to eviction declines, increases in housing stability, especially when they're paired with protections such as right to representation, which we do have now, right? We've seen this kind of relief for tenants in places like St. Paul, Minnesota, New York, and East Palo Alto, California. So we know that it does work. So I urge everyone today to please, if you have not, right, go look up this research. Help keep rents affordable and support rent stabilization. Thank you.
All right, next speaker, we are going to go past the 7:30 timeframe for public comments. I'm going to take a vote to extend public comment past 7:30. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cheyenne Miller. I know you guys know I'm here to talk about rent and I will spend the most of my time on that, but I actually want to kick us off actually with a thank you to Councilmember McCoy. For over a year, Homes Campaign has been busting our butts trying to get the state to do an escrow program. Like, it is so hard for renters to be able to put their money aside so that they can like get help fixing that apartment or fixing that house. And so I just really want to thank you so much for putting up a bill that would fix the escrow issue here in the city and hopefully we can get the state to follow suit. I also want to speak in support of the rent stabilization legislation. Thank you so much, Councilmember Darby, for putting up a piece of legislation that will probably turn all of the developers in the state on you and probably push back a lot. You will get a lot of pushback on this. But I think that this is a chance for Wilmington City Council to stand up for renters. And I think this is an opportunity for you all to be able to say that this is a city that is more than just 50% renters, that renters are welcome here and that we want to grow our city in a way that is sustainable and affordable for everyone. Rent stabilization just means that you are allowed to raise your rent, but you can only raise it so much each year. And it allows for us to be able to allow landlords to make that, that money that they need to, to be able to cover that property while making sure that tenants know what's coming each year. They know that their rent can only go up by 5% or 3% or 7%. And so one of the things we're hoping that City Council will do is make sure that we actually pass legislation that does just that. It is going to take seven votes to get this passed, but because we know John Carney stands against it, it's actually going to take nine in order for this bill to go through and to be overriding that veto that we might get. And so I'm actually asking for nine members of City Council to support this at minimum, but I'm sure that I could probably get 13 because you all are great people, right? So I'm hoping that we can get a commitment from everyone here to support rent stabilization to make sure it gets passed. I promise you, we will be watching. I promise you, we will show up to every committee hearing. I promise you, we will be in your neighborhoods. I promise you, we will be in your offices. I promise you, we will not be out of your face until we see a law passed. We got till 2028. Y'all got till 2028? Maybe, right? Right? We want to make sure you guys know, rent stabilization needs to pass this year. We should see everyone's name on it. I also want to thank Alex specifically. Alex, you are like the bomb. You are one of the few people who put rent stabilization as a supported item underneath of your campaign website and I really appreciate you for that. So I'm hoping that you will support this legislation and I hope that when the bill comes up, I see some hands raised up to say that they will co-sponsor. Y'all good? I remit my 11 seconds.
Thank you. To ask Megan Wilson. And Cheyenne.
Good evening. My name is Megan. Megan Wilson. I'm a renter in Wilmington from the 3rd District. When I first moved into my old apartment, the rent was $750. But the conditions were bad, mold, leaks, unsafe ceilings, falling through. But still I stayed because I could afford it. And at least there were no bugs. Not even a flea on my dog. Eventually I had to leave and I moved into a new unit. I hoped it would be better, but I placed, but the place I was placed in was even worse. This time, dealing with bedbugs, mice, roaches, and the rent was over $1,300 for a place that made me sick, literally and physically and healthy and emotionally. But the worst part is what it has done to my child. My child is disabled. He's autistic and non-verbal. And he has had to suffer through these conditions of mold in the walls, bugs biting him at bed at night, unsafe and healthy air. My child is living through this trauma of this and there is nothing more painful than knowing your home is harming your child and you can't afford to just pick up and go. I had to fight and I didn't do it alone. I joined the Wilmington Tenants Union and I found my voice. But no one should have to fight this hard just to live in peace. Rent stabilization won't fix everything, but it will give people like me a fighting chance. I'm on disability, you know. I get $1,800 between me and my son a month. It will protect families, protect health, and protect our children. If you don't have it in your hearts for us, the renters, then what about our babies and your babies? What about the kids who didn't ask for this? I'm asking you to pass this ordinance for me, for my child, and for every renter who deserves to live without fear. Thank you.
Porter with us? She has spoken, okay. Ann? What's your name, ma'am?
Samaya Sherman.
Samaya, okay. Samaya Sherman. All right, thank you. Before you speak, I'm sorry, is there a Chaney?
I think it's Cheyenne McGowan.
Are there two Cheyennes?
Yes.
Yes, you can come stand against the wall, please, along the wall. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone and members of the council. My name is Samaya Sherman. I'm a 24-year-old. I live with my grandparents and I am a graduate of UD's Master of Public Administration Program. It is my hope to live here in Wilmington so I can be a pillar in my community and run for local and state government offices. There I can help create policies that address the issues in our community regarding health, education, and housing. I'm here to express my deep concern about the rising cost of rental housing that's preventing me from being able to move out on my own. I'm here to tell you that there is an urgent need for rent stabilization. For too many individuals and families, stable and affordable housing is no longer within reach. What used to be a basic necessity is now a luxury. Rents are increasing far faster than wages. Many of us are now spending more than 50% of our income just to keep a roof over our heads. That's not sustainable and it's not fair. These renters are real people, teachers, service workers, single parents, seniors on fixed incomes, residents who make the city run and call it home. Many young people like myself are striving for independence and want to move out on our own. But with the current economic situation, while also having to pay back student loans, there's no way we can afford the rent of some of these apartments. The reason, this reason is one of many for why a lot of young people are leaving Wilmington and Delaware, taking with them skills and income that could support our city and communities. The lack of affordability is not just pushing us out of our neighborhoods. It's pushing us into homelessness, instability, and impossible choices between rent, food, medicine, and transportation. And while landlords and developers argue for market freedom, we cannot forget that housing is not just a commodity, it's a human right. That's why I'm urging this council to strengthen rent stabilization measures that would protect us from excessive rent hikes, prevent displacement, preserve the diverse communities that define our city. We need caps on rent increases that reflect real wage growth and cost of living, not speculation and profit. This is it to say landlords shouldn't be able to make any profit under rent stabilization. This code will ensure that rent doesn't increase more than a reasonable percentage within a specific time period. Instead of tenants being evicted or late on rent payments, landlords get their payments on time. I hope this council will stand with the people who were born and raised here and those that live and work here, not just the interests that profit from unchecked rent increases. Forgot to mention, but I live in District 7, Chris Johnson. I hope to get your support on rent stabilization. And given the current economic situation, we're just asking that you give us a break. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us and please introduce yourself.
I hope you're still awake. Also, my, I'm having an asthma flare-up, so if I sound a little difficult, anyway. My name is Cheyenne. I live in, on the West Side, in the 5th District, to be exact. I'm a lifelong Wilmingtonan who has lived on the West Side, like I said. And as a young girl, I can remember the exciting feeling of moving into a new place, just for me and my mom to end up living with my grandma again. And don't get me wrong, I love living with my mom. And I'm grateful for the stability she was and still is able to provide. But it's unfair. It's unfair to the young mother who has to couch-surf or end up in shelters. It is unfair to the young adults trying to make it, and it is unfair to the lifelong residents of Wilmington. I could go on, but it is just unfair and it's not just me. I work directly with tenants across Wilmington and I've seen an alarming rise in rent prices and evictions that are pushing individuals and families out, not just from their homes, but from entire communities. I've sat with seniors served with eviction notices. I attended City Council, I attended the City Council meeting on the senior high rises where they spoke about the issues they are facing while still paying nearly $2,000 to live in those, live and accept those conditions. I've helped parents facing homelessness because their new lease jumped by 40% or because of them or their children were sick or unsafe. It is heartbreaking to do all that you can and still not get very far, especially now that we are in a, in the midst of an unstable market. Housing instability is an experience where you Housing instability is an experience where you can feel hopeless, like you have no support, and feeling that, and feeling that it is often your fault for resulting there. Rent stabilization is a sensible solution that protects, protects tenants from unreasonable increases. It does not roll back rents. It simply sets a fair limit on how much they can raise year to year. There is a difference between rent stabilization and rent control. Remember this. Control caps, stabilization sets a limit. It gives landlords control while also giving back to the community. It is about allowing the people that live in the city of Wilmington to still be able to make it great, to be able to afford to live, work, and play here. And that stability and prices gives renters a fighting chance to stay housed and build a future here in Wilmington. It does not affect affordable housing options like many claim. And in fact, the states that have set limits to their rent have seen socioeconomic diversity, reduced vacancies, and a decrease in evictions. Give Wilmington residents a fair chance to stay here. And I urge you to support this ordinance and stand with Wilmington's renters, youth, and communities. And I'd like to extend my gratefulness and gratitude to Shanae Darby, Councilwoman Darby, for introducing this, and then Councilwoman McCoy for also introducing the other ordinance. Thank you so much.
WITN, is there anyone else virtually? I'm sorry. All right, I will allow those who have their, how many have their hand, hands raised? Okay, we can. Tito Ortiz virtually. Zita Ortiz. Zita Ortiz.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I would appreciate, I am, I am Miranda, living on the west side. And I just want to share, just appreciate if you guys would pass this bill because it will definitely help myself. Well, my, my goal this year is definitely to, to become a homeowner. I'm grateful to God that I have already been pre-approved. However, you know, I'm looking at the younger generation, the black and brown community. I have a, for instance, I have a niece right now who is looking for a rental property and she cannot find one because the prices are so high. So, however, if you guys would definitely support this bill, it will help stabilize the, the rent in the Wilmington community and, and for the younger generation to come. Thank you for allowing me to speak and happy Easter, everybody. Thank you. Good night.
All right, thank you. WITN. Lanita Brooks, thank you for joining us.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Lanita Brooks. I live in the city of Wilmington. I'm praying that City Council passes stable, rent stabilization. It's said that we have to pick and choose every month whether to pay in full, like rent, and what to slack on until the next payday. I think it's unfair that the landlords want to keep raising the cost of rent and not doing repairs or upgrades to the, to the place where you rent. Families still have to live and take care of everyday needs while the rest of, while the rest of the cost's still going up. And I pray, I pray in the future, instead of paying seventeen hundred dollars in rent that soon, that, that'd be going to a mortgage. I want to thank everybody for coming out, speaking virtually, in person. I wish I could be there in person, but if I don't work, then that's cutting towards what I have to pay in rent. I mean, as you can see, we walking around city, I mean, the city and, I mean, every, it's, it's a lot of people out there walking around, living in, living out of their cars, and I just think it's, it's sad. It's sad that, you know, you have to pick and choose which bill to pay every month. You can't, you, you gotta pay your rent, or you can't, you can't buy food, or you can't pay your electric in full. I'm just hoping and praying that our voices are heard tonight and rent stabilization is passed. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. And I believe we have one more person virtually, WITN, that we have two members from the public, have public comment. If you can hear me, virtually, there is someone on an iPhone. If you can raise your hand and we can unmute you so you can speak.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you for joining us. Please introduce yourself, and you have three minutes.
Yes, thank you. My name is Michaelina DeJesus. If you guys do have access to your phone, please feel free to just pull it out, do a Google search of a one-bedroom house in Wilmington, Delaware. If you don't have access to your phone, I'm sitting in front of a computer right now. And that will show you thirteen, fourteen, fifteen hundred dollars a month for housing. You know, we couldn't gain control or find some kind of subsidized water bill solution, so they raised it instead. Our electric is triple. We have these outrageous delivery fees. Affordable housing waiting list is like, it's, there, it's, you have to wait a year or two or not more. Affordable and subsidizing. And like I said, you can't find a house really, like, I'll even give you a thousand dollars. Let's, let's, before, we'll use Megan, the person that was just up there before. She says she makes eighteen hundred dollars a month. That's for two people. And so does my nephew, who works a, a minimum wage job. And that breaks down to about four fifty a week. After paying your rent at a bare minimum of thirteen hundred dollars, that leaves five hundred dollars to figure out if you need to pay your electric bill, your water, your food, your car, your gas. Therefore, it leaves no room for luxury or even possibly savings. And these, what would I call them, corporate contractors or whoever's coming in and buying and flipping, you know, these real estate companies, they're definitely in the business of property and not people. And I'll say that because my mother has been in her own home for seven years, thank God, under Section Eight. This building was just bought a few months ago. They first threatened her stability because Section Eight didn't pay them in time, which was their own fault in communication. They threatened to put her out and take her to court. And they also raised her rent twice, within just a couple of months. You know, if we sit in these meetings and we do nothing, the houseless community will rise. We already have an issue there now. And then what will we do? We will then put more money into these sweeps and then criminalize homelessness. You know, there's no, I also want to mention too, when we don't have houses, that's when the crime rate increases because people have to strive under their pressure, the pressure of keeping a house. I mean, if we have to bring it back to the numbers, I mean, how can you possibly with five hundred dollars, pay a three hundred dollar electric bill, a hundred dollar water bill? Not to mention, you can't even get out the grocery store with not paying a hundred dollars, you know, under a hundred dollars for just one bag of groceries.
You have thirty seconds.
Cars, which you're, you need to have. It's a state law. I mean, people look at gas and cars as a luxury, but even if we take that away, we still don't have enough. So, I, you know, I'm, at this point, I'm begging and thankful that, you know, this, this is on the floor and I'm hoping that you guys vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you. For joining us, please introduce yourself when you reach the podium. You have three minutes. When you have thirty seconds left, I'll give you a friendly reminder.
Thank you for having me. My name is Kyrie Dixon. I represent the fourth district, or the ninth district, I'm sorry. Good evening. I'm speaking as someone who has experienced homelessness for the past year and a half while on probation. It's been a constant struggle to stay compliant, find work, and rebuild my life without stable housing. I'm here in support of the rent stabilization policy, and I'm hoping that it does get passed. I'm right now personally under, you know, the, what, my thirty-day lease because rent got too high and I'm a justice-affected individual, so charging me up is, you know, is, is what we can expect. So, the rent stabilization policy, it will greatly help someone like me who is also, some of the council members here are aware of it. I'm struggling with recovering from a car accident I was in. The trauma associated with it led to me losing my job, which has now led to me, you know, going through the process on getting another one and maintaining that employment so that I can complete my probation, which I hope to in the month of May, by the grace of God. But yeah, I'm here to support the, the rent stabilization for individuals like me who are justice-affected and seeking stable housing in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us. Please introduce yourself.
Rob Bullock. I live in the,
Thank you.
I mean, thank you for the opportunity to speak today about, I support the rent stabilization. As you, as I'm sitting in the audience and listening to all the people coming up with different situations, living situations, and regarding to their rent situation. And it's really disheartening because they represent my family, you know. And I have family members, you know, that live in, in Wilmington and even though I live in Newcastle during the Route Nine corridor. And it, I'm really frustrated, really, the fact that there is no rent cap. Talking about stabilization, cap the rent. No one should be starving, making choices of whether to pay the rent and, to eat or pay the rent and making these hard choices. We in the hardest time as a result of the type of president that's, that's making these policies that is going to kill us, practically kill us. We need help. We need help from y'all. Please. I know y'all have family members, you know, I know you know friends and people, you know, that are, just have Social Security. That's all they living off of, you know, and they still got to find a way to pay the rent and eat. The developers that are keep on voting polling, told brother, that's it. Y'all keep coming up with these luxury apartment rent for rent. You need to get some developers that will develop low-income housing so that we be able to sustain and raise our families. You know, I, I always think about the time when I was in my twenties or thirties trying to get, have rent. If it was these times, I'd be houseless. Or worse, I'd be homeless. So, I please beg y'all to pass this rent stabilization. It's imperative. Thank you.
That does conclude public comment. We do want to thank everyone who spoke in council chambers and also virtually. At this time, we will move to legislative business. We're going to start with Councilmember Harley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Okay, let's see, I have an order, ordinance to present, ordinance number twenty-five dash zero one one.
Ordinance number twenty-five dash zero one one, agenda number zero zero three zero. An ordinance constituting amendment number three to the fiscal year 2025, operating budget being an ordinance to amend substitute number one to ordinance number twenty-four dash zero one six.
One second, Mr. President. Sorry about that. Okay, can you hear me, Mr. President?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, sorry about that. I would like to move that it be known on the enacted clause of the ordinance and call for a yea or nay vote.
It's been properly moved in second, that be known as the enacted clause of the ordinance and called for a yea or nay vote on the question.
Yes, Mr. President, this ordinance, for the most part, is a budget amendment that is going to provide the city with the ability to hire an additional thirty firefighters for EMT service to begin their required certification training immediately. The recruit academy is going to start on May the twenty, May the fifth, 2025, and hiring also of the additional personnel that's going to enable the city to staff the total of five ambulances working twenty-four hours, seven days a week, and service by late summer. And the fiscal impact, first of all, is that we're going to move some unused funds from our St. Francis contract from the last budget. And it totals to six hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. And that totals between the fire department personnel services, which are about five hundred and thirteen dollars, which includes authorizing the thirty additional, which will take us from one fifty-six to one eighty-six in terms of giving us the manpower we're going to need. Also, our battalion chief, he's being upgraded from lieutenant and for a civilian EMS manager. That's around the personnel services, and it also includes one hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars for information technologies for radios, laptops, and tablets and things of that nature. So, that's the intent of this budget amendment.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Johnson.
I appreciate you bringing this on the table, Councilwoman Harley. I guess my only concern is, having realized where we came from, this is the rough nature of this because we're just told about thirty days before Trinity is no longer providing services as of May twenty-fifth, that it's kind of a shotgun approach. And we dealt with the Prezicki administration on this, and now we're dealing with the Carney administration on this. This is a big deal. This is a big undertaking, and we're given thirty days. So, I just feel like, and I don't know if you know the answer, Councilwoman Harley, but is there a extension even to July? Because this is a significant hit, and we talk about all these issues with housing and, and other thing. These dollars are going to be taken up now with this EMS program. So, when residents come to us needing assistance, we're not going to have it. So, I just wanted to know, is there some negotiation, more time? We told Taney Washington this, saying the same thing to the Carney administration that this is shotgun approach.
Oh, may I, Mr. President?
Yes, Councilmember Harley.
Yeah, so first of all, thank you for sharing, but as you know, this was presented just last night. And the question that you're presenting right now would have been perfect. Just last night, we went over this in the budget hearing. So, the administration, everyone was there last night to be able to respond. But I do want to say that we didn't just find out about this. The leadership have been in conversation with the mayor since, I want to say, early February. So, it's, it's not a thirty-day decision that's being made. Myself, President Congo, myself as the Finance Chair, Councilmember McCoy. So, this is not all of a sudden. This, this has been thought out. As you can see, the breakdown of the personnel services, that's why I shared them. And at the end of the day, we have to have the services for our constituency in terms of getting the, the manpower that is needed. We, we don't have an option. The residents of the city of Wilmington, if they call for ambulance service, if the city of Wilmington does not prepare ourselves to service the residents, then that's not really an option either. But I appreciate the, the comment, but again, Councilmember Johnson, everybody was on the floor in the chambers last night. And you could have shared that information, or had you called me earlier, I could have possibly given you more information, but it wasn't a last-minute decision at all. So, I just wanted to share that.
All right, thank you.
Have a follow-up.
Yes, follow-up, Councilmember Johnson.
Um, again, I, I appreciate it. I will review. Um, I'm just bringing out again timelines. I try to be consistent looking at the last administration. We did push back a lot about the, the shotgun approach. And yes, I know there's a meeting. It was at four-thirty PM. And frankly, I was in transit, didn't get here until a little bit before five and I missed the meeting. So most residents would miss that meeting, um, as they do work jobs, full-time jobs. So I appreciate it. But again, I don't know how I feel about this. I think we're stuck unfortunately. But, um, I just think, um, all of council, um, needs to be included in these kind of major decisions, uh, going forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Owens.
Yes, thank you, uh, Council President. So I have a few points I want to make. Um, one, I completely agree with the, uh, notion that we need to get this done in order to make sure life-saving services are still being, um, rendered to our residents here. It is our duty and responsibility as a council to make sure that happens. Um, currently, right now, um, we have outside entities who are coming in, um, having to fill that gap for us just the other day. Um, after a call went out, um, from the, uh, third, uh, Station Three, um, our firefighters who are all EMS certified, they took the fire truck and they responded to that call. But it wasn't until about another twelve minutes, B-12, which is brand one hundreds up, uh, Bellefonte area was able to come down and respond, well, at least get to the Station Three area and then still had to go another seven minutes. So this, again, having a fully operational EMS services is going to be critical to saving lives. Now, I do have some other things I want to add in here. Um, as we're bringing this new service on, we have to make sure that we are making it equitable for our fire department right now. We have to make sure that our pay, um, is increasing for them, but then also that we're bringing more diverse, more diverse members of the fire department on. When we look at this fire department right now, there's a few things. Their schedule was changed not long ago and it has caused a lot of wear and tear on them. And now you are asking them to take this additional service and the woman to fire department is going to say yes because they always answer the call. But it's on council to make sure that we're fighting that they get better wages, better job safety and have better hours. The current schedule right now is causing a lot of stress on their bodies. Um, so again, while we want to take care of the residents of the city of Wilmington, we must take care of the people who are willing to step up and save the lives of our residents as well too. So while I will be supporting this tonight, I think going forward, we need to take that into account as well too.
Thank you for the comment and I totally agree with that one hundred percent.
Harley?
Yes, um, so I just want to, I just want to say that I support this in general. Um, but over the last five years, I've advocated and I don't see this in regards to the positions that will be added. But looking at, uh, Fire Department Diversity Training Officer, we just recognized the gallant Blazers who are black firefighters, but we're not actually doing anything to address the issues that they bring to us in regards to discrimination that black firefighters are being faced with today. And it's in violation of the Wilmore decree, um, that's set in place to make sure that black and brown firefighters are not discriminated against when it comes to, um, when it comes to promotions and disciplinary actions. So I just think it's said that that's not in here. And also the fire department recruitment and retention. We're talking about adding all of these positions, but have done nothing to address the issue of recruitment in our fire department. They struggle with keeping, what they struggle with recruiting people and they struggle with retention. So now we're about to add this on and every single public safety has a recruiter. Military has a recruiter. Police have several recruiters in their, um, in our department in Wilmington PD. The fire department has zero recruiters and they rely on leadership to create a committee every year to do recruitment. And that's a whole nother conversation for another day. But to say we're adding this, which I support, but to then lack in other areas, I think it's irresponsible for us to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I've been, I'm sorry, I've been advocating for this for five years and I've been saying this. So this is not a, I didn't attend the meeting. I didn't do any of those things. I've been asking for these things over and over again. And I also been asking for the fire department to become accredited, accredited, but it's not accredited.
Councilmember Oliver.
Mr. President, um, I will, um, to be support this. Um, but I must say that, um, we have been advocating, um, Councilwoman Harley, I know Darby and myself, we have been advocating for the police department for, um, at least, I know, uh, for at least since I've been on city council. So I do want to say that because of this new administration, um, we did see a minority promotion and because of the advocacy, um, that the group that just left the Blazers have been, um, promoting. So we, we did just see a minority, um, in, uh, that was promoted. But, um, that's not to say it, there shouldn't be more. And with this new administration, we just had a conversation with them and they will be adding a recruiter, um, for those, um, for the firefighters. So that's some good news to hear based on our conversations. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McCoy.
Thank you. Um, so actually they are adding a battalion chief. I have been asking that question about the recruiter and retain, uh, retention because that is something that was brought up. We had a whole meeting about a little over a month ago and asked all of these questions that was actually posed by my council colleague who wanted to have these questions answered. Now, mind you, some of these questions have been asked and answered previously, but kind of sporadically and all over the place. This was one meeting with Chief Looney answering the questions that needed to be answered. As we managed to push to, uh, get the, um, when it comes to the promotions, we pushed and pushed to make certain that these promotions happen before we started doing with voting on budget. We finally seen that happen. We see another promotion is about to come. We're going to see battalion chiefs. But this here, uh, as Councilwoman Harley stated, this is something that we've learned about. It was coming, you know, soon as the, um, as soon as the new administration came in, this is one of the first things we started having conversations about. We understand that we are taxing our outlet, well, when I say taxing, not money, but our outside, um, uh, emergency management, uh, medical centers or whatever, their services rather, outside of the city Wilmington, they are coming in here to make certain that we, uh, are always covered. Where Trinity Health has actually have not been able to be in compliance and they are falling off. We want to make certain that the city Wilmington does not, uh, black the emergency services that they need. So we had to move this forward a little earlier. We, when it comes to our firefighters, yes, that change of shift actually didn't just, just happen. That change of shift happened about four years ago. And they have been, you know, they are going through their whole contract thing. Well, then I think it's probably gotten taken care of, but that was on them and their union and all of that stuff. So we don't really have that part any longer. But I just want to make certain that people realize that the thirty, uh, men and women that we intend to recruit and to train as firefighters and EMS are going to be able to, be able to be, uh, all things for us. Not just somebody who's going to be driving an EMS truck or a firefighter. They are going to be certified for both things. We want to make certain that we don't overtax the ones that we already have. And that's basically what I wanted to say.
Thank you. Councilmember Oliver for your second round.
One last thing and I'm done. Well, this is a good time for the public to know that they are recruiting. Uh, your son or daughter just has to be eighteen, so if you, and they pay good money. So if you have, uh, a daughter or a son that's graduating from high school and is eighteen, they qualify for this. So, you know, share it with your friends. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Owens.
Yes, um, so just a few clarifying points. I guess this is to the bill sponsor, um, if she knows the answer. Um, because like Councilman Johnson, um, I also work until five. Um, so Trinity Health, they failed the contract. With them failing, I know we're using the remaining money that was supposed to be paid out to them to help pay for this. But with them not meeting their deliverables, are we getting any money back from them? Um, is my first question. And two, my second question is, um, can you clarify for the residents, um, this transition of it becoming on, it becoming the, the city's EMS services? Will there be any added additional calls for the residents of the city of Wilmington if it's a EMS that is responding to their call?
So I'll start with the last question now to answer your question. And the, uh, the last question and the first question, there was some funding, um, which is the five million? I mean, hold on, let me get my numbers together here. But to answer your, your question, there was money left over, um, that we thought, the city thought that we would have to give Trinity that we did not have to give them. So the funding that we did not have to give them, we're utilizing that funding to cover those items that I shared. That, that's what I can tell you.
Can I clarify?
Yes, Councilmember Owens.
Yes, I know that we're using a remaining cost for this, but, uh, Trinity has been failing the city of Wilmington for quite some time. And Newcastle County Fire Departments, um, volunteer fire companies all across Newcastle County have had to come in, um, and help us. So I'm asking for the money that we were paying out for the months of December, January, February, March, April, are we getting any of that money back since they were not providing a service? So therefore, they were getting money but not doing work. And, and my job, if I didn't do my job, I wouldn't get paid.
Well, the city, we're just taking it on. So I'm not sure what you mean by, are we getting money back? We're, we're just taking on this contract.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Johnson.
I think it, to ask some clarifying, I think the, the question is, I think it's unsure. Councilwoman Harley, you probably don't know, but Councilman Owen brings up a good point. Um, this was supposed to last until December thirty-first. So that's what we negotiated last year. I was part of those negotiations. We wanted to give the new administration time to do this. So by them breaching their contract, we essentially are again, put in this position. So I understand we have to do it, but they really were supposed to do it to the first year of administration. Um, and so I, I think we, that's a question we can pitch administration, the law department to talk about recouping funds. But yes, they weren't serving from the time, you know, last fall to now, that they are, um, breaching their contract, I believe. So, um, I, I definitely support this. I don't want you to think, Councilwoman Harley, I don't. I just wish Trinity had given more time and more notice and we at least didn't have to scramble to put a class together. But, um, seems like we have a class together. So whatever you have to do to support getting diverse class, I'm certainly behind it.
Okay, I appreciate, uh, both comments. And again, um, this is the same information that we just talked about last night. And as it relates to up through December, um, to my understanding, up to December of twenty twenty-four, or are you talking about twenty twenty-five, Councilmember Johnson?
Twenty twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five.
I want to ask the council members, please wait to be acknowledged and please ask to.
Okay, because you being the finance chair up through twenty twenty-four, I appreciate you sharing your input regarding that because that piece of information is definitely something that you will be privy to. So, um, as it relates to, um, oh, may I, uh, Mr. President, continue?
Councilman, Councilwoman Harley, going to ask that you please raise your hand so you can be acknowledged and just not automatically.
Sure, absolutely.
Just automatically respond. And councilmembers, please raise your hand. I will, I will acknowledge everyone. But please raise your hand just so you can keep everything in order.
Sure, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Should I proceed or you want me to, hold on?
Yes, you may.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Yes, you may proceed.
Proceed?
Yes.
Okay, so again, like I said, uh, that just last night, uh, we, we talked about the same identical, um, information. Um, you had everyone from the administration there. And again, I appreciate the comment from Councilmember Owens, um, in terms of his questions and comments. You know, he was there to the end of the budget hearing last night, um, as well as Councilmember Johnson. But again, um, if there are dollars for us to recoup, then we definitely will have that conversation to make sure that we recoup those dollars. So thank you for your comments and I would like to take the roll call, Mr. President.
There are, there are councilmembers who still have questions or comments. Councilmember Bracy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to, uh, give a point of clarity for everyone. Um, in the presentation that the administration did yesterday, they made it clear that their, uh, Trinity is a fee for service, which means that the money that has been spent is money for services rendered, which means there's nothing to recoup. Essentially what's happening is what is left that was budgeted in FY twenty-five is now being transferred to, transferred to the firefighters because they are no longer doing the fee for service. They're no longer doing the service, so they're no longer getting fees. And we're transferring those fees to the firefighters. So just so that everybody is clear on what the administration presented last night, that's what was presented. So, um, I just want to make sure that, you know, we have a lot of public, members of the public, that they understand what's happening and where this conversation is going. So we're not giving Trinity any more money. We're voting, we're voting to give it to the firefighters who will now take on the responsibility of serving our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing all the hands raised, I will return it to the sponsor for any final comment. If not, we can call the roll.
Now, I want to first of all, thank, uh, Councilmember Bracy, uh, for sharing the clarity around, um, the funds and the funds, um, being, uh, returned. So I, I appreciate that. And I also appreciate the comments from Councilmember Owens as well as Councilmember Johnson. And at this time, I would like to take the roll call.
Colonel, please call the roll.
Councilman Owens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver? Councilwoman Harley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Willauer?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bracy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilman Hackett?
Yes.
Councilman Spadola?
Yes.
President Congo?
Yes.
Thirteen yays.
Clear to adopt it.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. May I be excused?
Yes, you may be excused. Councilmember Bracy.
Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present on your behalf and call for the first and second reading. Ordinance number twenty-five zero one-four, agenda number zero zero three six. An ordinance to amend chapter two of the city code to establish an office of educational advocacy as a division in city council.
First reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance to amend chapter two of the city code to establish an office of educational advocacy as a division in city council.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Mr. President, I move that this be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer it to the Education, Youth and Family Services Committee.
It's been properly moved in second, that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Education, Youth and Family Services Committee.
Mr. President, may I be excused?
Yes, you may be excused.
Thank you.
Councilmember Darby.
Yes, Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present and call for the first and second reading.
Ordinance number twenty-five dash zero one-five, agenda number zero zero two six. An ordinance to amend chapter forty-five of the city code to retain a third-party vendor to conduct a full, I'm sorry, to conduct a full operational and financial assessment of the water sewer fund and perform a feasibility study to establish an affordable water program.
First reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance to amend chapter forty-five of the city code to retain a third-party vendor to conduct a full operational and financial assessment of the water sewer fund and perform a feasibility study to establish an affordable water program.
Mr. President?
Reading of the ordinance.
Mr. President, I move that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and I refer it to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
It's been properly moved in second, that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present and call for the first and second reading.
Ordinance number twenty-five dash zero one-six, agenda number zero zero two nine. An ordinance to amend chapter thirty-four of the city code to provide for residential rent stabilization.
First reading of the ordinance.
Men, chapter thirty-four of the city code to provide for residential rent stabilization.
Mr. President, I move that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer it to the Community Development and Urban Planning Committee.
It's been properly moved in second, that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance. Development and Urban Planning Committee.
Mr. President, I have another ordinance to present and call for the first and second reading.
Ordinance number twenty-five dash zero one-seven, agenda number zero zero three-seven. An ordinance- An ordinance to amend chapter forty five to exempt elderly and disabled residents and residences with children under the age of five from water service disconnection for non-payment of utility charges.
First reading of the ordinance?
An ordinance to amend chapter forty five to exempt elder elderly and disabled residents and residences with children under the age of five from water service disconnection for non-payment of utility charges.
Second reading of the ordinance?
Mr. President, I may, I move that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer it to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Second.
Mr. President, I have another ordinance to present and call.
Hold on, hold on one second, please.
Oh, sorry.
It's been properly moved, it's been properly moved and second that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present and call for the first and second reading.
Resolution twenty five dash zero twenty one, revision one, agenda number zero zero three eight. Whereas the one hundred and ninth session of Wilmington City Council believes openness, transparency, and accountability are fundamental in carrying out its duty to the citizens of Wilmington. And whereas council believes the public should be afforded every opportunity to give public comment regardless of whether they attend in person. And whereas to be informed, the public should be aware of matters to be discussed in committee meetings. And whereas in light of the foregoing city.
I move this resolution be received, recorded, and filed and adopted by a yea and nay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second, the resolution be received, recorded, filed, and adopted by a yea and nay vote. On the question?
Yes, I have a lot of papers in front of me. I'm trying to figure out which one um it is, but which number is it? I'm sorry.
Thirty eight.
Number zero zero three eight. Three eight. I have zero zero four, zero zero four three, zero zero three nine, zero zero four. I might need three eight, um two six, three seven. This is it.
Alrighty. Alright, so um this resolution, um it's really about just um cleaning up some things with city council to make us a little bit more efficient and effective in the work that we're doing. Um, the re- this resolution would make it a requirement that draft legislation, presentation, reports, and updates be available for public viewing before committee uh meetings. So currently, the process is, um we have to have our agenda posted seven days prior. Sometimes our agenda is posted, and it used to be legislation um would not even be available to be read and reviewed by the public or myself as a part-time city councilperson. But also, this legislation expands on that and says presentations um and other items that are on the agenda should also be ready seven days prior um for two reasons. One, as a city councilperson, as a part-time city councilperson, I think it's really important. I want to engage. I don't want to come to a meeting to be talked at. I don't want to come to a meeting um and not understand what's going on. I want to be able to engage, ask questions, figure out if I support, don't support before I get there. I really wanted to, I want to be an engaged city councilperson. I also think it allows time for the public to participate by knowing in advance presentations, legislations that are available for them to review so that they can actually engage. Instead of being talked out at presented information um and not being prepared ahead of time. So this piece of legislation is solely about that. It's just, it provides, it does provide emergency contingency procedures. So if there is a need, like a, let's say a COVID was to happen again, and we get a whole bunch of ARPA money, that is an emergency situation where we won't need a legislation posted um seven days prior, right? So if you read through the um resolution, that has been updated, because I heard council people at our committee meeting and was like, that's a great point. What about emergency items? So that has been added to this piece of resolution. So that is an option. So I will pause to see if anyone has any questions or thoughts.
All right, thank you. Seeing no hands raised, we'll go back to the sponsor.
Yes, I have um, we can, I have no closing thoughts.
All right, call the roll. Clerk, please call the roll. I'm sorry, hold on one second. Any council, council member Willauer?
Um, yeah, uh Councilwoman Darby, I just want to thank you for um putting this resolution up. It it's definitely beneficial for anybody who wants to participate in um decisions that are being made by council, that the materials that are being discussed are published in advance. Otherwise, it's really hard to know what's going on. So I think it's really great that um that you put this forward. And um I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson.
Uh, I would like to be added as a co-sponsor as well. This is something that um, you know, during one oh seven and one oh eight, we've tried to work with the administration. Now that this is a new administration, I think it's just getting their um people to to work a little better. Also, this puts the uh pressure on the Law Department to get us draft earlier. Um, because oftentimes, the public doesn't see that. That's a bottleneck. We get legislation requests and it doesn't come back timely. So I appreciate this, and we have to hold the administration to this.
All right, thank you. Seeing no other hands raised, return to the sponsor. No other questions?
No other questions.
All right, clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilman Owens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver?
Yes.
Councilwoman Willauer?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilman Hackett?
Yes.
Councilman Spadola?
Yes.
President Congo?
Yes.
Eleven yeas and two absent.
Declare adopted.
Mr. President, I have another resolution to present.
Resolution twenty five dash zero two two, revision one, agenda number zero zero three nine. Whereas the one hundred and ninth session of Wilmington City Council believes openness, transparency, and accountability are fundamental in carrying out its duty to the.
I move this resolution be received, recorded, filed, and adopted by a yea and nay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second, this resolution be received, recorded, filed, and adopted by a yea and nay vote. On the question?
Yes. So um this resolution amends um city council rule two to include a additional public comment time for each individual legislative item, followed by a final round of debate by members of city council. So just to get a little bit of history about this, so Councilmember um Linda Gray, she represented the first district. She passed away in the last term. Her prior term, um she um pil- pil- did a pilot program where we allow the public to have a second round of public comment based on legislative items. During that time, she thought it was very important that we hear from constituents, and it allowed the public more time to engage with us. So this piece of legislation is reinstating that. And a lot of the arme- arguments you're going to hear tonight is that it is going to make the meetings too long for a lot of council people who are sitting here tonight. However, when I talked to actual council people who were, who were, who participated in that pilot program, a lot of them said that the meetings were not long. It did not make the meetings longer. So that is a myth and something that they will say. And then the second component of that is that um really, the people who made the meetings long were council members. Council members um would overtalk um and take long to just have conversations about things that were on the floor. So it wasn't the constituents that made the meetings long. It was actual the council members. So this piece of legislation just reinstates and allows our community to participate with us during our whole council meeting and public comment. Um, so I'm going to pause there.
Seeing no hands, council member Willauer?
Yeah, Councilwoman Darby, I just want to thank you again um for all these resolutions that are around public comment. Um, there's a lot of discussion about transparency, and I think that um residents have a lot of great ideas and can um clarify issues, just let us know uh how the decisions that we're talking about impact them. And so I think opportunities for public comment, you know, at the beginning of the meeting is great, but sometimes it's also really excellent to have public comment like right in the moment. So I'd like to uh, I I want to thank you for bringing this up, and I I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Councilmember Johnson?
Um, I I did serve on the one oh seven with uh Councilwoman Gray, again, under that pilot program. I do agree with Councilwoman Darby that that was before the time we had limits even on council members, and it it would get out of hand at times, very heated, as we all have read in the papers about that council. Um, I I think we have a system that works pretty well. I think council president, under heads of leadership, one oh eight and one oh nine, we have a pretty good flow. We engage the public in committee meetings, although I admit sometimes committee meetings don't uh engage, I think, well enough. But I think um sustaining public comment till however long it takes, like when we had residency. We let public comment go, I think, till like ten PM, and that's never been a problem. So um I just think it's the flow. Um, this flow, similar to the General Assembly, I think, once we hear from the public in committee and civic associations in the meeting, then it's time for us to take action. Now, I could see it possibly being disruptive, like it is something like residency, where, you know, we have the same people might come up again. And so um I I I definitely get the spirit behind this. I think council president's done an excellent job is is council president keeping order, keeping us flowing. And I think we get intel all throughout the process. I know Councilwoman Oliver is one that does it, and Councilmember Owens, Councilmember Darby does as well. So you're getting the pulse, all of us, through the whole time. So I see it as we're getting the pulse. And in that moment, you know, our districts um in the city, they trust in us to make the right vote. So um that those are the reasons why I just don't, I think this doesn't flow the best. Otherwise, public comment is unlimited, uh as we always give. They're here to speak, they get a chance. I just think it's better before so that we can get to council business once we hit the floor.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes, um again, Councilwoman Darby, thank you for bringing this forward. Um, before her passing, I got an opportunity to talk to um Councilwoman um Gray quite often about this. Um, I was on the other side of this in the one hundred and seventh, um and I will say it was the council members who made those meetings long with their remarks. Um, but this is common practice for Newcastle County Council. Um, they allow for individuals to come and give um comment on each individual piece as they're voting on it as well, too. This is a a framework that I've adopted for my committee. Um, and it has worked. It hasn't made our committees too long. It it allows the uh opportunity for the public to really um dive in and be able to um communicate their thoughts on legislation that's going to impact them as well, too. So again, I think this is a a great opportunity um to empower the community to get more involved with city council um as we're going to be handling a lot of pressing issues over these next four years. Um, and I would urge all my colleagues to hopefully support this.
Thank you, Councilmember Field, followed by Councilmember Hackett.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I I I think that there are ample opportunities for constituents to express their opinions. We just had over an hour of public comment, and people, this is a very small city. There are ample ways for people to to reach us by phone or by email or to meet with us. And um also, we just set the rules for this session three months ago. So I I don't see what is, to echo Councilman Johnson's comments, I think this, the flow as it currently exists is is good enough. I don't see a problem that merits being changed, given that we just set the rules three months ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hackett.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Councilwoman Darby for bringing this to the floor. I think uh, you know, our job is simple, to make sure that we listen to the residents. Um, you know, at the end of the day, you know, we're sitting down at the door, we're trying to caucus, and you know, there was a lot of noise saying that we were trying to be sneaky in different aspects. So, you know, I'm just so happy that we get an opportunity, we move forward with this, to continue to let our people in our city be able to speak up for different things. Um, so thank you so much.
Councilmember Spadola?
Thank you, Council President. The the other side to holding a public meeting, well, first off, I agree that it is a hundred percent council members that make the meetings too long. It is not the public. Um, but the other side to have, holding a public meeting, are the people at home watching, not necessarily speaking and engaging, but just listening and learning. And the only feedback I've got on this is I don't want the meetings any longer. Please don't support it, so I won't be supporting it. And I hope my colleagues will work with me. I'm reducing the amount of time that council members can speak, so we can make the meeting shorter. Thank you.
Uh, yes, I will be supporting this piece. I was a part of that uh session uh where Linda Gray, Councilmember Linda Gray, did um, did make this happen. It was an excellent piece, and I believe that if it's uh passed, it would it would be another excellent piece. Again, I'm not going to repeat uh those who supported uh or are going to support, I'm not going to repeat everything that he just said, but I would do want to be a co-sponsor. And Councilmember Hackett?
Yeah, you can add me as a co-sponsor as well. Uh, once again, we're 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 here to listen to the public uh day in and day out on on their different concerns, so that we can figure out different ways to, you know, make sure we're successful for them and the community. So anyway, we got the opportunity to listen to them, understand them for.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes, um my one last comment, I will uh use what just happened on this council floor with the finance chair literally not answering questions to fellow council members, because we were a few minutes late coming from our jobs. Um, that pays the majority of our bills. This is the reality um of some of the chairs, including the finance chair, how they are treating people. Again, if you can't get to a a meeting that starts at four thirty, but most people don't get off of work until five, you are out of luck when it comes to the committee mem- uh meetings. So again, this gives uh individuals a opportunity to be a part of it. I wish it wasn't like that. I wish we didn't literally just have an example on this floor less than thirty minutes ago. Um, but that is the reality that so many people face. So that is why I'm supporting this right now.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Johnson?
Um, this shows real-time thinking. Um, Councilmember Owens actually made an excellent point. That is something that I have to internalize, uh that if someone comes late, then they can't um speak. There's, that's how that is a thing. So I don't know if we could have it. Obviously, most people speak at public comment, they speak once. But if somebody does come late, it is hard, because I know we all have it um on city council. I'll be, you know, coming, coming from my office and be on Zoom and have to come in, and I'm always here, but I'm not here right on time. So I certainly get it. So with those reasons, um, you know, we can always change it back, I think. Um, but I think we we can try to get better, I think, on council. And so I think I do like the new energy we have. And if it gets out of hand, then we can always change it, you know, but uh I think we should at least try it out.
All right, seeing no other hands, Councilmember McCoy?
Uh, yes, I actually was part of one oh seven, and I was here for the late meetings. And I do agree that it was uh the council who actually made the meetings as long. But we did get a chance to hear from some of the uh, some of the constituents, and it was very repetitious. It's the same like group that that came to speak after each one. My concern is the council. Why do we need to still have a debate? If they're just going to come and speak about what the uh legislation is, then why do we still get a chance to do another debating whole point thing afterwards? Like, I do not wish to extend these meetings any longer. I'm like, I would love to be able to hear from them. They actually spoke very well and eloquently uh today when it came to public comment. I don't have a problem problem with them with the public comment. It is the debating that drags it on. So as long as it still has a debating with uh council after each time they speak, after each piece of legislation, I won't be supporting it.
Councilmember Owens, did you have a?
Can, sure. Can a amendment be made to this?
That would be up to the sponsor, so.
So can I say it at least, or?
Um, the the sponsor would have to. I guess, Councilmember Owens wants to make an amendment?
Potentially.
You can, you can, you can make an amendment if you like.
Okay, so just putting this out there based off what Councilwoman McCoy just said, I would be in favor of eliminating one of the first five-minute increments that we get and keeping the three minutes on the end. So we still get two speaking opportunities, five minutes before, three minutes after. That actually reduces the amount of time council members speak as well, too. I don't know if you all.
Other question? Councilmember Hackett?
Uh, even uh with your amendment, I I honestly think that it could be both three minutes. Uh, I wouldn't even say the five, if I'm being honest. Um, you know, like at the end of the day, like Johnson, Council, Councilman Johnson said, when we get here, it's time to work, and we already know what's going on. So, you know, we can keep extending the time for us, but I I don't, I don't see it. So I would say if we did three minutes on each, I think that would be representative to what we need to get done, so.
And on the amendment, Councilmember Spadola?
Nothing, Council President.
Anyone else on the amendment? Can you clarify your amendment, Councilmember Owens, please?
Yeah, it's all right.
This is the debate.
Sorry. All right, so based off of what Councilman Hackett just said, uh my amendment would be a motion to amend this ordinance to have. motion to amend this ordinance to have only one three-minute speaking slot for council members prior to public comment, and then one three-minute speaking slot after public comment. So it's still two speaking opportunities for council members. It reduces it by two minutes, two minutes each speaking slot, and just breaks them up, one in the front end, one in the back end.
All right, I just, on the amendment, I think that it might get more support if there aren't any, if that second part isn't a part of the amendment. But that's, that's up to the, that's up to you, Councilmember Owens. I know that Councilwoman McCoy spoke to it, as long as there's no second part for council members to speak, she would support it. And we do need eight for this to pass, because it's a council rule, so that's up to you, Abby, want to handle your amendment?
On the amendment, Councilmember Spadola, followed by Councilmember Hackett.
Doing something like that would get me interested in supporting it, but I don't think we're able to chop it up that quickly. Frankly, I would want to reduce our time to two minutes. So just a heads up, if you introduced it, even if the amendment passed it, I would still not support it. But if we, if you wanted to hold it, and we workshopped it, reduced it to two minutes, that council member spoke both times, I would support it.
Councilmember Hackett, on the amendment.
Yeah, so what I will say is, thank you, Mr. President. I think sometimes as a council person, you know, when you're going through it and you hear other council people speak, and different things are being said, sometimes you do need to speak again, especially just kind of like what Councilman Johnson just did here tonight. Like, you know, we're learning from each other every night. So I do understand the second part, but what I will say is, we're trying to get this done. So to be honest with you, I mean, at the end of the day, I don't care if it was one minute, two minutes, just not more than three minutes, all right?
Mr. President?
Councilmember Oliver.
Yeah, I too would ask the sponsor to hold it, so we can talk about it, if we can, like you said, not tonight, but if you hold it, we can have a conversation.
Right now, we're on the amendment, I'm sorry. Councilman, we're on the amendment.
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I'm talking about, on the amendment.
No, we're on the, we're on Councilmember Owens' amendment.
He never, he never, he never.
Yes, he.
No, he didn't. It wasn't, we didn't, we didn't vote on the amendment.
No, because we're talking, we're talking, we're discussing it. It's on the question, so we're talking to the amendment.
That's what, well, I'm on the question. I'm on the same, I'm on the same page. I'm saying that, on the amendment, right, we're on the amendment.
Yes, not, not, not Councilmember Darby's resolution.
No, we're on.
We're on.
I would ask if we will hold it and have a full discussion. I would possibly support it.
That would be up to Councilmember Darby to hold the legislation. But right now, we're on the amendment. Councilmember Owens, did you want to clarify anything else with your amendment?
I think that's it.
Councilmember Spadola.
Yeah, just with the, another way to sweeten the pot for everybody, if you reduce the amount of time of public comment, two minutes for everybody. First round, second round for council members, two minutes flat. Makes everybody get to the point.
Owens? Councilmember Hackett.
What I will say is, for public comment, I'm not trying to arrest nobody here. At the end of the day, we just extended it for them to be able to talk tonight. And if somebody got to come here and they got to get their point across, tonight, we heard some heartwarming stuff that's going on in our community. So I don't think we should be cutting their time down, but if you want to cut council time down to one minute, I'll be with that.
Yes, I would have to agree. It is, and I, it's been said a few times, but it is definitely not the public that extends the meetings. I'm not sure how much we can reiterate that, but it is definitely us as a council who makes the meetings a little bit longer, not the public at all. But Councilmember Owens?
Did you want, want to vote on the amendment, or did you still want to move forward with your amendment?
For now, yes.
All right, so we'll take a voice vote on, can you, can you repeat your amendment just one more time for clarity, please?
Yes. There would be two, three-minute speaking slots, one at the front end and one at the back end of public comment.
Councilmember Hackett.
Sorry, beforehand, we know that this is going to take eight votes. I just want to reiterate that Councilman Spadola seems to be in any kind of condition of interest if it was at two minutes for us. So I just wanted you to look at that to see if that's possible.
Councilmember Owens, before you respond, Councilmember McCoy.
Yes, I've actually heard my council colleagues say eight. I think nine is the super majority. We need nine votes, don't we, in order to change?
Because of the numbers, some people have asked it to be excused, so it's eight now.
So it's based on, oh, so the number that's actually within the?
Yes, yes. All right, Councilmember Owens, on the amendment? Sorry.
My brain hurt.
Yeah, I, I, I do agree with Councilwoman Oliver. I, I think it brings up a intriguing point about changing councils' time. I agree. And in a U2 public, we do need to streamline meetings. I, I would ask, again, I know this is about the amendment, I think there's a way we can do it similar to Councilman Spadola, so I think we should, in general, hold it till we can come up with a better plan, but that's just me.
Councilmember Hackett.
I just want to say, I don't want to hold it, and the next thing you know, we come back and we looking at a revised, possibly lesser time for the public, because I guess that was the initial suggestion. No, it wasn't?
No.
Oh, I mean, I guess that was, that was what mentioned, so I don't have my.
Do you want to take a vote on the amendment, Councilmember Owens?
I think we could change it to two minutes.
All right, so just for clarity for everyone, can you please?
For clarity, council members would get two two-minute speaking slots, one before public comment and one after public comment.
All right, so we're going to vote, we're going to take a roll call, a voice vote on the amendment. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Ayes have it.
Nay.
Ayes have it. So Councilmember Darby, returning to you for a final comment.
Okay.
I know it's a lot.
All right, so let's, let's, um, I don't know. Um, let's, let's vote on it.
All right, clerk, please call the roll.
This is Resolution 25-022 as amended. Councilwoman Owens.
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby.
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver.
No.
Councilwoman Willauer.
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy.
No.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Field.
No.
Councilwoman Cabrera.
No.
Councilman Hackett.
Yes.
Councilman Spadola.
Yes.
President Congo.
Yes.
Seven ayes, four nays, and two absent.
And because it didn't need eight, is defeated.
Mr. President, I have another resolution to present. Resolution 25-023, Agenda Number 0040, whereas the 109th Session of City Council, Wilmington City Council believes openness, transparency, and accountability are fundamental in carrying out its duty to the citizens of Wilmington, and whereas council believes the public should be offered every opportunity to give public comment regardless of?
I move this resolution be received, recorded, and filed and adopted by a yea and nay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, the resolution be received, recorded, filed, and adopted by a yea and a nay vote, on the question.
Yes, so this resolution, resolution does two things. One, it removes something that was illegal, which shouldn't even be a point of conversation to try to keep it on here, because it was told when it was added in our last session that it was illegal. So I'm just cleaning it up. The illegal thing that was put in there was that public comment shall be available only to City of Wilmington residents or taxpayers. That's actually an infringement on people's right, right to, to write the speech. The second component of this actually cleans up some things that one council person mentioned about how we engage in our committee meetings. So this allows that the meeting, this allows for meeting agendas to have a sign-up link for those who wish to get public comment. So this legislation does not explicitly require for someone to use the link to sign up for public comment, but it allows us to have a way to engage with people beyond committee meetings. So I became a chair of this committee meeting. After my committee meeting, I'm like, okay, how do I get in contact with the people who just made public comment? And they were like, oh, we don't collect that information. I would like to be an engaged city council person. I would like to engage with my constituents past them making a public comment at my committee meetings. I would love to make sure they're included in our email list, that they're getting information from us, and that I'm building a relationship. So those are the two points for this piece of resolution.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to ask you if you can ask the law to put, was it, I never seen nothing in writing, a member vote, I just wanted to know if it was illegal. I never seen anything in writing. So if we can ask the poll meritoria, was that the case? I just wanted to know for myself, not that I'm not going to support it.
Did you want to speak?
A city council meeting is a limited public forum, and their, city council can place reasonable restrictions on who can speak. And there's some case law that suggests limiting, limiting comment to folks who live or work in a city is allowed. So I disagree with Councilmember Darby's assertion that it's illegal, but I will say that it can be removed.
Thank you.
All right, see, Councilmember Willauer.
Thank you. This, this is great legislation. Thank you, Councilwoman Darby, for putting this up. You know, I, I'm a big supporter of public comment for reasons that I was talking about earlier in the meeting, and this just makes it easier. Sometimes when people want to give public comment, they don't know where to, don't know how to do it, or raising your hand at the meeting sometimes, you know, it can be missed. So I think adding the sign-up link is a great idea. And then also, you know, I do believe, I think free speech is, is really important, so, you know, placing limits on who can speak in these meetings. There might be somebody who doesn't live here but has, you know, something to add to, to the conversation. I think they should be allowed to speak at public comment. So I definitely support this legislation or resolution, and I'd ask to be added as a co-sponsor.
Thank you. And seeing no other hands raised, return to the sponsor.
Yes, we can run the vote.
Clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilman Owens.
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby.
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Willauer.
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Field.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera.
Yes.
Councilman Hackett.
Yes.
Councilman Spadola.
Yeah.
President Congo.
Yes.
Eleven ayes and two absent.
Declare adopted.
Mr. President, I have a resolution to present. Resolution 25-024, Agenda Number 0041, whereas the City Council, Wilmington City Council 2022-2025 Strategic Plan seeks to foster a stabilized Wilmington, as well as a transparent and well-represented? I move this resolution be received, recorded, filed, and adopted by a yea and nay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, that this resolution be received, recorded, filed, and adopted by a yea and a nay vote, on the question.
Yes, so this piece of legislation is solely about the land bank. This isn't about the whole Gibraltar process. This is about land bank's policies and procedures. So the City of Wilmington, the city council established a land bank. When we established the land bank, it's a city quasi-entity. City council created the land bank. City council is also responsible for holding the land bank accountable for their actions and the things that they do. So this piece of legislation is about holding the land bank accountable for, for transferring over a property without letting city council know, and having a executive committee meeting that did not include council members to know that this transfer was happening. So Gibraltar was transferred from the City of Wilmington to the land bank. It was not transferred under the gist of the land bank's purpose. The land bank's purpose is to hold property that then to renovate it, revitalize it for the community. The last administration, Mayor Mike Prizicki, decided to use the land bank to hold a piece of property because he wants to fix it up later on with another entity. That is not what the land bank is, purpose is. That is not why we use the land bank. We're not there to store properties for developers to use later on for their own profit and their own desires. The land bank is for us to look at vacant properties in our community for the community. So this piece of legislation is holding the land bank accountable for their actions, right? Gibraltar, whole other process, because you guys will go off on public comment talking about the wrong thing. This is about holding the land bank accountable for their actions, and they need, we as city council have the power to hold them accountable, and this legislation is about holding them accountable. Land bank does, has to give us a public hearing about the why and what happened, why, how did they acquire Gibraltar, and what their plans are with Gibraltar. They are not a placeholder, just to hold land for rich developers. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember, is that Cabrera?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to start off by reading the mission of the land bank. Says the mission of the Wilmington Neighborhood Conservancy Land Bank.
Point of order, point of order.
Is to return vacant, dilapidated, abandoned, and delinquent properties back to productive use, while strengthening and revitalizing the neighborhoods and inspiring economic development. So right in the mission, it clearly states it is a bank for properties. I will give you an example that recently, the Albert Palmer School in Southbridge was also put into the land bank. The land bank is not developing the property. Is not paying for any of the development for that property when it gets demolished and it get turned, and gets turned into housing, hopefully affordable housing.
Councilmember Cabrera.
So again, yes, can you hear me?
There's a point of order from Councilmember Oliver that needs to be heard before you continue.
Thank you, Mr. President. The point of order is that we're on Resolution 0041, and that has nothing to do with the mission or over the park over Southbridge. She should, I mean, Councilman Cabrera should be speaking on just this piece right here.
Councilmember, Council President, I did not, Councilmember Darby, say specifically that that is not the mission of the land bank to hold property when it is. So I'm clarifying the mission because that is incorrect information, and I will proceed with what I am saying.
Yes, you may continue.
That when property is put into the land bank, this particular decision was made from the former mayor, and the city could have held this property separately, they didn't have to put it in the land bank, but they did, because we have a land bank. And the land bank is not responsible for spending a dime on developing either Gibraltar or Albert Palmer or any others. So to say that, and why is Gibraltar in the title of the resolution if it has nothing to do with that? So at this point, I'm just, for clarity, making sure that people understand, the land bank is there to, yes, stabilize our neighborhoods, to repurpose homes, affordable homes. And we are not developing the Gibraltar, and we're not developing the school. And there's nothing illegal that was done. Now, if you want to, if council wants to vote for a hearing, or whatever, you can do so. But the land bank does have public meetings, and folks can attend those meetings and see the operations. And not to mention that three entities from city council sit on the land bank. So if any one of them felt that something was being done inappropriate, they should have spoken up while they have the power to do so. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Field.
Yes, I want to follow up on some of the points made by Councilmember Cabrera. I am not in support of this resolution as the eighth district city councilman. And to echo a point by Councilwoman Cabrera, the allegation that something, somehow something improper or inconsistent was the mission of the land bank that was made, is, is not accurate. The land bank generally obtains abandoned, rundown, 19th century and early 20th century properties that nobody wants, and obtains them to restore them. And that is essentially what Gibraltar is. Even though it's larger and bigger, it's no different in many regards than 99% Even though it's larger and bigger, it's no different in many regards than ninety-nine percent of the properties in the land bank. Second, if this is about transparency, there are ample opportunities to obtain transparency and information about Gibraltar and how it was obtained without having a public hearing. I ask council members to vote against this resolution.
Thank you, Councilmember Hackett, followed by Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, President. I just have a quick question for the sponsor, and I just want to know, like, what's the difference between the committee meeting that we just had, that Gibraltar was bought up, everybody talked about it, and had a discussion on how it was purchased, the transition, the transaction that was made compared to like having a public hearing?
Councilmember Darby, did you want to respond now or your final comments?
I can respond now.
Or I can, I could finish, oh, my bad.
No, that's fine. So it would be the land bank initiating that. So there's land bank, so it, it's actually good practice for land banks when they have a transfer that is over a certain amount, that they then call for a public hearing. They call for a public hearing for the community to come out, they invite council members to come out. So it's actually just good practice across most land banks that already do this, right? So it's really, we could have it at city council, that's something we can do as a council, but the land bank has to initiate it. We don't know everything, the day-to-day operations of the land bank, to know that a major transfer is coming, right? That, those are conversations that they had. And the land bank had an executive session when they made a decision to transfer Gibraltar from the city to, to the land bank. That was a secret, a meeting that they closed off. So there were no, so they claimed that there's three council people who will sit on this board. Those three council people were not in that executive session.
Do I get a follow-up?
Sure, Councilmember.
Thank you so much. So I guess we, we, we've talked, you know, several times about knowing that, like, the land bank has to be reformed. And I guess this is a point where this is a process of hearing. What you're saying is like that process needs to be reformed. Like if they do have large purchases, there needs to be a public hearing. I, I just try to figure out, why are we going back to a, to something that's already been done to get a public hearing instead of stating it now, moving forward? If they do make larger purchases, hey, listen, you got to do a public hearing. Because I guess, my, my thing is like, this is, once again, this new council, we trying to move forward. You know what I'm saying? This is stuff that happened, and at the end of the day, even the money that's left over can't be earmarked to nowhere else. This is something that they've done, the past mayor has done. But at the same time, we're trying to make sure that it doesn't happen again. So I, I guess I asked, like, do we, can we change this legislation to make it seem as if though we're making sure that when we do have this in order, all the, all the reform? Because it's a lot of reforms, you know, there's a lot of reforms. Even with the availability, making the website, all the, all the stuff that we talked about in the committee that needs to get done, I would have thought that this would have been the legislation that was presented. And when I look at this legislation, it's like geared around Gibraltar, which is in the past to, to, to many, you know what I'm saying? So.
Councilmember Darby.
Yes, so there is another piece of legislation coming, an ordinance that will be for reform for land bank from everything that we have talked about before, that's currently being worked on. This piece of legislation is addressing something from the past, but a lot of the community members from the eighth district called me and reach out to me because they feel like they're not being advocated for and that they have been in the dark about what's going on with Gibraltar and questioning us. Why do we as city council allow the land bank to do this under the, one, not informing city council during in a closed executive session? So I get a lot of questions from people even outside my district who called me and asked me to advocate for them, especially in the eighth district because they feel like their council person doesn't. So that's why I'm doing this, is really for the community.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson.
I, I do agree with Councilman Hackett. We do got, we do have to look forward, as I was someone that was on the land bank for the last term, and I can say I was not invited to that meeting, it was executive only. And I think the other problem is, I talked to them about reform, is that I could not, I, same thing with Council President, their meetings would be during lunch hour, where a lot of public can't attend. And we talked about they needed to do evening meetings, and that's again, we're going to deal with that. But it need, those reforms need to happen. In terms of Gibraltar, again, I'm not sure, I have heard, you know, there's still people upset about it. I like to look forward, like Councilman Hackett said. So I really would like this to be broader and a public hearing just about the land bank in general, and reforms needed. But I don't want to necessarily go back to Gibraltar, but again, it's the eighth district. As people know, I'm old school, if something's happening in the district, I don't question that person or anything in that district. If the people in the district want it addressed, then it should be addressed, but otherwise, let's, let's move forward.
Councilmember Owens.
Yes, Councilman Johnson, I absolutely agree with you. I try to stick to my own district. But my concerns with this is there's first district taxpayer dollars going to Gibraltar right now. Right now, if you just break down some of the things, I, I believe almost five million dollars supposed to come from the state. The council has given millions of dollars over the years. I have real concern because I, I hear everyone talking about the land bank is supposed to help get properties that are bad, that has a lot of violence going around them, take those properties and get them back in the hand of community members. I see that they finally picked the list up on their website today. I'm glad maybe they saw that this was on the agenda today. But my question is, with millions of taxpayer dollars going to the land bank, do we as a council not have a duty to make sure that those dollars are being spent correctly? And that's my question, I'm posing it to everyone, including the members who are on the board of the Wilmington Land Bank. Again, we had a very lengthy committee meeting in which it was asked about when is the next board meeting, when that will be posted, the Zoom link not being posted, to any of that. So as my council colleague Cabrera said earlier, if the members on that committee cared, they would have taken those questions back. So I, I would like to pose to her, have you gotten any of that information back that we asked for as Chair of Community Development and Urban Planning?
I will allow Councilmember Cabrera to respond if she'd like. But if not, we can.
I'm trying to unmute Council President. Heard the committee meeting, I think it was clearly stated when all the questions were asked of former council member and State Representative Bud Frill, who has held the position for two months of President of the Land Bank, that we are moving forward, we have reorganized with this, now we are at full staff, which we were not, because we had people that were out on medical leave and an employee that had left. So he has gone in there to clean up whatever needed to be cleaned up. An audit was just done with the city auditor. The land bank passed with flying colors, anything that needed to be corrected previously was done. The report is coming out at the end of this month, and the inventory is up. And it wasn't because of this meeting, Mr. Owens, it's because we finally had the list.
It's Councilman.
With all the available properties, with fifty of them are available to contractors and to the public, and the others are reserved for development that is taking place in the city. And the next meeting is, the agenda on the website is for the meeting on Wednesday, April twenty-third. So you're more than free to see that the information is public and to attend those meetings. And we will take into consideration availability of the board members so that we could have more participation. In Mr. Johnson's case, he did come to some meetings, and we went with the majority of when people were available. Thank you.
I will allow Councilmember Owens a follow-up, then we'll go to Councilmember Hackett.
Yes, as any good board member, like I know you are, you've probably been paying attention to the years of board information that you've been getting, even though you sponsored the resolution to pitch yourself on the board. So I was asking, did you have that information? Not did the executive director who y'all just hired, again, he is new there, I want to give him his time. But you, as a long, multi-year board member, I was asking you, as a member of council as well too, and you as the Chair of Community Development and Urban Planning, did you have this information? You said you didn't have it at the last go-round at the committee meeting. So again, it's been almost a month. So again, thank you for answering the question that you don't have that information. Thank you so much.
All right, we're going to go to Councilmember Hackett and then Councilmember Field.
Yeah, and once again, like I asked Councilwoman Darby, maybe we could put this one on hold so we could figure out a reform on, we talked about this. But in a, in a, in a bigger stage here, like Councilman Owens said earlier, or just a moment ago, like, we got to keep the land bank accountable. I mean, we have three board members in. I think there has to be an opportunity where like, Councilman Johnson said, they got to address to make sure that the board members can be present. I'm not sure if they have Zoom, you know, meetings or not, or, you know, allowed to have Zoom or something in that nature. But at the end of the day, for land bank, I will hope that we can get the reforms done instead of worrying about Gibraltar.
Councilmember Field, followed by Councilmember Willauer.
Yes, I have several points just to make in my final comment. First, most, the vast majority of residents in the eighth district that live in and around Gibraltar are happy with the overall situation about how Gibraltar played out. One person or two people, or maybe three, can call a council member from another district, but that doesn't change the facts of most people being satisfied with how it played out. Second, an allegation was just made that the city purchasing Gibraltar somehow means that the eighth district is getting an outsized share of city tax dollars. I would just ask, let's look at tax dollars spent district by district year over year. The eighth district most likely gets the least tax dollars spent in its district. And, and that's something that can be checked objectively and factually. Third, again, this is a resolution dragging up an issue that happened in twenty-twenty-three. We can debate whether it was a good idea to buy Gibraltar or not, but it happened. And if, if the sponsor is truly interested in transparency related to Gibraltar, there are other ways to get that than a public hearing. So finally, I, I ask council members to, to vote against this resolution.
Councilmember Willauer.
Yeah, I, the land bank, there was a city council committee meeting about the land bank and about just trans, issues of transparency. You know, having the, the inventory up on the website was the first thing. I get a lot of contacts from people who are interested in purchasing land bank properties. I think that while this resolution is about Gibraltar, it seems to have prompted the land bank to finally put its inventory up on the website today, because it wasn't even up there yesterday or last week when we were talking about, at the finance committee hearing, when we were talking about the contribution from this year's budget to the land bank. So I think this is about, this hearing is about Gibraltar, but it's also just about kind of changing the land bank's order of operations to prioritize transparency and community engagement, which I hope will become part of the way the land bank operates going forward.
Councilmember Hackett.
Yeah, thank you, President. I just try to figure out, how do we move forward and try to go on reforms? When, when we have this hearing, most people are going to be coming in talking about Gibraltar. And at the end of the day, we've already stated that the purchase has already been done, the money that's already left over, there's nothing, can't be earmarked to nothing else. Like this situation, in, in some aspects, is out of our hands. But the, what is not out of our hands is how the land bank moves forward and how we can be able to reform it and make sure that it is moving properly for the way of our constituents in the city, the minority developers, everybody moving forward. So I'm just trying to figure out a way we can move forward.
And seeing all the hands raised, I will return to the sponsor.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, I was trying to get to my hand. Can I make one more comment?
Yes, Councilmember Cabrera.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate all the comments of my council colleagues. So in closing, before we go back to the sponsor, the committee meeting was held, your voices were heard, questions were answered, that we, the answers, that we had answers to. So in terms of the inventory, it was clearly stated that we were working on that. So now all of a sudden, it's nefarious because the inventory went up there. Yesterday, I was at the land bank office, I was there with a reporter, we did a walk-around, we gathered all the information. We got the things that needed to be done with the two months' time that the, that the new president has to make sure that this inventory was very clear. You want to know about the reports, what happened in twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four? That report's coming out at the end of April. I try to say to the people at the land bank, let's wait till May and have that committee meeting so that we would have all the information, because we would have had all the time that you needed, instead of making it seem like, oh, we don't know what we're doing, and we didn't have the information, and we don't want to share it. So as it is being put forth, as the work is being done, as we're being reorganized, you're getting the information. We actually agree with many of the suggestions that have been made by council members. Councilmember Darby put forth a list of things that she would like to see and what other land banks do. There are things on that list that we would readily adopt because they're good ideas for good management. Remember, the land bank in Wilmington is a small organization who had two staff members. Now we finally have four people, and things we believe will be very smooth moving forward, and the input of council is welcome. So we will look at these suggestions that council have and engage city council moving forward. So I want to leave you with that. There is nothing that is done that we're trying to hide or nefarious going on. The land bank has done so much good, but it's not a perfect organization, and it's gone through its trials and tribulations as a new organization, because it's not like it's been around forever. But yet, this land bank in Wilmington is a land bank that other cities and other states come to us wanting to mirror their operations with what we're doing. Whether imperfect or not, we are doing a good job, we are moving properties and to, and people into affordable homes, both rental and both homeownership. And we are transforming the city, look no further than Eastside, the Eastside Rising Project, and look no further than Lower Hilltop and everything else in between. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, council members.
Thank you, going to go to Councilmember Owens, followed by Councilmember Hackett.
Yes, so I'm on their website right now looking at their twenty-twenty-three annual report. I will say this was not up the other day, so I do thank the executive director for putting this up. But just based off the funds awarded for twenty-twenty-three, federal dollars, three million taxpayer dollars. State bond bill, one-point-three-five million dollars taxpayer dollars. One million dollars from the city of Wilmington taxpayer dollars. A half a million dollars from Newcastle County taxpayer dollars. Seven-hundred-fifty thousand dollars from ARPA funds from the state taxpayer dollars. So that is why I keep bringing up the point that there has to be, even though they are a small organization, even though they may be a new organization, we have to take out the fact that any other nonprofit in the city of Wilmington, if they was this new and had that small of a staff and this many errors, we would not be funding them and even considering putting another penny into them right now. So I'm not saying to stop this, I'm not saying stop the operations of the land bank. I'm saying we have a fiscal responsibility and a duty to the taxpayers of this city to make sure that there is oversight when it comes to the land bank. That's what we are talking about right here. So please, everyone, I, again, I hope none of my comments are personal, but this is about the taxpayers, right? And, and Councilman Field, I agree with you. Between the eighth district and the first district, our two districts are probably the least invested in, right? So I'm right there with you with that. And that comment wasn't saying that we shouldn't see investment, we do want to see equity throughout the city. There is gun violence issues that we need to address. So again, if we're using all these taxpayer dollars, we have to make sure that they are being used to their best ability to make sure that this city is growing in the right direction and making sure it's inclusive for everyone. That's it.
You go, boy!
Councilmember, Councilmember Oliver. Councilmember Oliver.
I will say, thank you, Councilman Owens, for that, truly appreciate that, and that's where we need to be at. But I also want to just, last comment, just to state that, you know, we, we do have people that sit on the board, and sometimes when I hear some of the conversations, I don't know if it's a safeguard that needs to happen. As Councilman Owens said, like, it's a lot of taxpayer dollars that go into this. But sometimes it sounds like our board members are on the side of not the taxpayer's side when we're talking about being fiscally responsible. So I just ask all board members, when they do go to these meetings, they understand that as a council, on the side of council, our job is to make sure that we're taking care of things and being responsible for the people and not looking at the land bank and saying, hey, listen, I'm on their team and not the council. You're on the council.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. Just a couple of comments. I do think that a public hearing would be an excellent idea because it will give the council and the public just time to, an opportunity to talk to the land bank and just kind of figure out what happened and how do we even move forward. I mean, there's a lot of things that I think council members can speak to about the land bank that haven't even been brought up yet. And I think a public hearing would be a perfect opportunity. There were some really great points made. I'm not going to repeat all of them. So I'm just going to end with that, and I will be supporting this. And Councilmember Darby, you can close up.
Yeah. So reforms will be happening. It's currently happening as we speak. There is a legislation with the Law Department, a land bank reform, so that is happening. But the land bank, in my opinion, has now become a tool where the community is being pimped for developers and their friends to house projects. So the purpose of it is to hold property, but not to hold property for the developers and their friends to go build and do what they want. It's for the community, not for developers and their friends. So the land bank, this legislation is putting pressure on the land bank to change how they do stuff, how they operate. It's unacceptable. They keep asking us for money. I had that point put down, but Councilman Owens went over that really well. And I think this public hearing is common practice, and we have to let the land bank know today that they have to do the right thing, especially if they're going to keep asking us for money. And I have a question. People keep saying, this is old, this is old, this is old. But if someone robs you five years ago, and we never figure out who it is, and then they get caught, and finally, five years later, are we going to say, oh, what they did, that's five years ago? We just let it hap, whatever, it's cool. Erase all the bad that they did. No. No, 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 no. I don't care if they did it two years ago, three years ago, 10 years ago. They need to be held accountable when it's time for them to be held accountable. So the timeframe, to me, doesn't make a difference if it happened two years or two months. The land bank needs to be held accountable for their actions. So again, reform is going to happen. This is just a legislation so the land bank knows that they cannot operate the same way they've been operating and holding property. It is a land bank to hold property, but it's not to hold property for developers and their friends to do whatever projects they want to do.
Clerk, please call for the rule.
Councilman Owens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wellauer?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
No.
Councilman Field?
No.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
No.
Councilman Hackett?
No.
Councilman Spadola?
No.
President Congo?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five. Six yeas, five nays, and two absent.
Declare adopted. Councilmember Darby?
The President may be excused.
May be excused.
Is my next resolution?
0042.
Sorry, I missed, I missed stay. I'm sorry. Sorry about that. Forgot this is Delmarva. I'm sorry. Mr. President?
Yes, Councilmember McCoy?
May I speak while she's looking for legislation? I just want to state that the rounds that we just had over that debate, we went over the two, two, three minute, well, two times, three minutes or whatever, and this is what I was stating about, we had to eliminate ourselves out of this and just hear from the public.
Thank you.
We kind of get worked up.
Thank you. Councilmember Darby?
Mr. President, I have a resolution to present.
Resolution 25-025, revision two, agenda number 0042.
I move this, I move this resolution to be received, recorded, filed, and adopted by a yea and aye vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second, the resolution be received, recorded, filed, and adopted by a yea or aye vote on the question.
Yeah, so this piece of legislation is just going to the General Assembly. It's asking for them to look at Delmarva bills, because we're still being impacted by it with the tripling of bills that happen because of delivery fees, or, as they said, they said that it's based on our usage, we increase usage. But there was an absorbent increase in our Delmarva bills, and I'm asking the state to still consider instituting a moratorium or electric utility shut-off and late fees for residential customers for a period of six to 12 months until they can do a review of affordability measures for Delmarva. So that's what this legislation addresses.
All right, seeing no hands raised, Councilmember McCoy?
Yes. I actually had conversations with a few of the people at Downstate and Delaware General Assembly, and they were already working on some of this. So this, this resolution is basically in support of what they're working on already?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Seeing no other hands raised, clerk, please call for the rule.
Councilman Owens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wellauer?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson? Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilman Hackett?
Yes.
Councilman Spadola? And President Congo?
Yes.
Nine yeas and four absent.
Declare adopted.
Mr. President, I have a resolution to present. Resolution number 25-026, agenda number 0043. I move this resolution be received, recorded, filed, and adopted by a yea and aye vote.
So this piece of resolution is urging, oh, sorry. I'll bet.
It's been properly moved. Second, the resolution be received, recorded, filed, and adopted by a yea or aye vote on the question.
Yes, sorry. So this piece of legislation is urging the General Assembly to do a findings and recommendation assessment on third-party vendors when it comes to electric companies. So what we found out in our committee meeting, when Delmarva came, and we had the public advocate there and a public commission, was that a lot of residents were being taken advantage of by third-party providers who were providing the electric, providing electricity to their homes, which caused their bill to hike. What we found out in that meeting is that there wasn't a lot of controls and regulation around third-party vendors, which was crazy to me in regards to protecting consumers and their rates. So a lot of them would get to a third-party vendor, their rate would be really low for like a three-month period, and then their fourth month, it was skyrocket high. And then the customer is looking at their bill, why is it so high? It's because these third-party vendors have very unrestricted regulations. And I get it, we want to have an open market of competition, but there still has to be some baseline and protections for consumers. So that's what this legislation or resolution is about.
President?
Councilmember Oliver?
Yes, I'd like to thank Councilman Darby for bringing this forth, even working with the state legislators. I did go down to Dover to the commission regarding our constituents' high bills. So I'm a major advocate with anything regarding these high bills that have been placed on the City of Wilmington throughout the state constituents. So I will be supporting this. Thanks again.
Seeing no other hands raised, clerk, please call for the rule.
Councilwoman Owens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wellauer?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilman Hackett?
Yes.
Councilman Spadola? President Congo?
Yes.
Ten yeas, three absent.
Declare adopted. Councilmember McCoy?
I have an ordinance to present and call for the first and second reading.
Ordinance 25-018, agenda number 0044, an ordinance to amend Chapter 34 of the City Code to allow residential tenants in the city, in city properties to deposit withheld rent in a city-held escrow account.
First reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance to amend Chapter 34 of the City Code to allow residential tenants in city properties to deposit withheld rent in a city-held escrow account.
Second reading of the ordinance.
I move that that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer it to the Community Development and Urban Planning Committee.
Second.
Properly moved and second, that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Community Development and Urban Planning Committee. At this time, we will move to petitions and communications, starting with Councilmember Owens.
Yes. On April the 26th, it's Community Cleanup Day. There will be multiple cleanups going on in the first district with Grand Yon Hills, Harlan Park Civic Association, and then the Northwest Civic Association as well, too. Please feel free to reach out to any of those Civic Association presidents about those events. Also, there is, at One Village Alliance, at the beginning of the month, again, it's free haircuts for individuals. And then also, there is a tech conference for individuals who are 18 to 24. We will be sharing that on my Facebook page, the Councilman Kobe J. Owens Facebook page this upcoming weekend. Feel free to sign up if you know any young people who want to get involved with tech.
Thank you, Councilmember Darby.
No petitions or communications tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Oliver.
Yes, Mr. President, as Councilman Kobe stated, I mean Owens, we will to have major cleanups in the third district next week. But I would like to announce that Delmar Power, we have a Northeast residents meeting at the Hope Commission on Tuesday, the 22nd, where Delmar Power will be coming out with their computers, assist individuals with energy education, energy efficiency, and bill support. Payment arrangements will be made on the spot. So this is for the third district, but if any individuals want to come out, this is for everybody pretty much with the high bills that have been occurring throughout the city. So they are going to be making payments on the spot. Some of the, and I do this because some individuals just don't have transportation to get to Delmar Power. So I try to bring the informations to the constituents in the third district. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wellauer.
None at this time, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember McCoy.
Yes, Mr. President, I just wanted to state that the MSK Community Center will be having a Easter egg hunt at Cushusco's Park on Saturday, April 19th. I believe it starts at 11:00 a.m. And then also, Byard Square, well, the Discovery Disc Golf are going to be planting trees on the same day, and that begins at 9:00 a.m., and that's going to be at Candy Park. So there's going to be some activity over in the sixth district, and I hope someone, that the people can make either one.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson.
I have no items tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Field. Thank you, Councilmember Cabrera.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to wish everyone a happy Easter for those that celebrate, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hackett.
No items for me tonight.
Thank you. Is Councilmember Spadola still with us? No, all right. All right, I do want to thank everyone who joined us this evening. Those who are in council chambers, thank you for sticking in there with us. Those who are with us virtually, again, we want to thank you for your engagement. If any of us at council can ever be of any assistance, please call us at 302-576-2140. Again, our number is 302-576-2140. And to Councilmember McCoy's point, I was very lenient this evening, allowing council members to have more speaking opportunities than our rules say, but I do have to kind of be a little bit more tight with that because we just want to make sure that everyone is sticking to what we agreed on for our rules, because it's only two times. But I know there was a lot of passionate discussion, so I did allow for more conversation. But please try to keep your comments just to, to, two times. All right. And with that, I will accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved. So moved, second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.